All right. Thank you for joining us today for our Board of Education pre-work session. Our board meeting cadence allows board members to prepare for upcoming regular meetings through these pre-work sessions. They're typically more casual, primarily for info gathering. No formal votes will be taken. We'll begin our pre-work session with our book study of the year, The Governance Core. Dr. Whitaker, please take it away with Chapter Three.
Yes, thank you so much Chair Herndon. The chapter we are reading for is Superintendent Governance Mindset. And so, in looking at page fifty-five, what factors might contribute to a superintendent embracing a hands-off or even a preemptive damage control approach to the governance relationship? According to the book, a lot of superintendents, like they don't have enough time to try and, you know, manage the board. And, you know, I could see how that, some superintendents might take that style because they already have so many things on their plate. So, that's according to the book. That's one of the reasons why they might take a hands-off approach.
I think there's a classic tension between an executive and a legislator, which effectively is what the act has, and the willingness to be guided at times by people that may have that you have. It, I can see how it would be easy to fall into a trap of accepting that as the reality as opposed to trying to help us have enough information to be effective in performing the governance tasks that we need to be able to do.
I mean, I think board personality probably more than anything. Hands-off if you feel like that's appropriate and preemptive damage control. If the superintendent, if you felt like the board was overstepping or involved in stuff. So, kind of like what both of those have in
I agree with more the latter point. I think that damage control approach probably comes more with here being micro-managed. So, I'll come to you with all of my quick wins or I'll come to you with things that are completely falling apart when I actually need you to save me because I don't want to be stopped a long way.
Okay.
Oh, anything new?
Okay.
I think y'all covered it.
All right. Anything Sophie, you want to add? Okay. All right. So, are there things that the school board can do to make district management more difficult? And even, I would probably say easier? Either or? Okay, Han.
It's a good answer. Starting with this answer. No, let's just starting with actually making it easier. And I think this board does this quite well. I think that we are largely, we're not just intentional with our relationship with you as the superintendent. We're actually fairly intentional with our relationships with each other, right? And we spend time cultivating it even where we disagree or may not have the same perspective as one another. We approach each other with that level of respect. And I think that that probably takes a lot of, you're not dealing with an explosive pressure cooker board. You're dealing, I think, with a little bit more of a genial, willing to be guided or informed board. And that, I think, helps, I hope you find that that helps you too. You're just, I think, it is, I'm speaking from experience here. It can be very easy to slip into an operating or non-governance role, especially if you have expertise in an area that's relevant. And so, trying to continually be aware of what the right role is versus not is also critical to be helpful as opposed to hitting the button.
I think use could come from everyone. There was a bit in this chapter I thought about the accuracy of information and trust. And so, I think for me, it's always easier when we all have the same information and we're operating with that information. And I think what can be difficult is if we're using different sets of information. And when I say information at this point, I don't mean data that you're giving us, but if we have our own information that we're using versus the shared information that we're given.
I thought that in this particular chapter, all of these little, each of these different superintendent anecdotes were actually quite helpful. Sometimes I find this book looks to be a little bit of a drag sometimes where they start putting in all these different, like, examples that are may or may not be relevant, but I thought these were quite helpful. And one of the, one of these superintendents, the first thing was that, I think it was the one from California said that he felt like his board members would never find out something from someone else or another, or through the media, that he did not communicate directly. So, I think that makes things easier. And another one, I think, said that, I think, Dr. Whitaker is first and foremost an educator. I feel like every time I meet with her in a one-on-one, I have to have, like, my pen and paper because she, at first, she's going to educate you. And I think that's also what one person said here, was that they felt like making sure that every board member understood whatever the, whatever goal or problem was we're trying to have a particular strength. But then there's some things that you might catch on to very quickly and others may need more. Possibly we can all be on the same page, but if you pretend it will
All right. Next question is, are you conscious about making the most efficient of the superintendent's time?
I feel like this is a loaded question.
And I'm going to tell you, I did not write any of these questions. Oh wow.
I wrote them.
So, this book, if you, I don't know if you remember, but Illinois actually did this book study during the pandemic. And when they did this book study during the pandemic, they created a study sheet. And the study sheet has guided questions for school board members to use as they facilitate or read this book. I literally typed the four questions before I read this chapter. So, yes, you guys know I'm a teacher. I was thinking I was really taking the easy route in that I did not have, like, to take it out the door or the, all the things I typically do with you all, but I said, I'm going to just take this off the shelf and just see where it lives. Because obviously, I can read all of the vignettes in here. And I, like, literally, I was like, our board retreats are three times, four times a year with four hours. That's sixteen versus three times a year times seven, which is twenty-one. I was literally doing the math on the vignettes in here. And the way I know the norms and protocols and conversations and development has been a part of the work of the past sixteen months. So, that's where, you know, I just literally took that off the page. So, I didn't write the question. I'm just asking you. Well, you know, every week we get the P O I, which is always so helpful. Initially, when we started having the, the weekly meetings were more frequent than what we were previously accustomed to. But they've been very helpful because you're getting more information in real time. And so, one of the ways that I try to, I think, you know, be mindful of the superintendent's time is to have my questions ready, you know, when we get ready to discuss the P O I. You do. Every time. Yes. And I didn't look over here for a reason, but you do too.
Oh, yeah, no, I, yeah, I think I wondered it. I think at first, and there are still things I have questions about, but I see now, you know, why we do have a calendar and, you know, we do have an agenda. And so, therefore, I think, yeah, to that point now, you know, I am using that P O I to drive both the questions I have as well as the other trends I might notice. But, yeah, I hope I've come to that point.
Yeah, I will say, we had a conversation just yesterday in talking about I policies. And with us being in the venue we were, I was able to take it assembly, how we could search through policies, see what I policies live across all state of Georgia that are inclusive of the phrase that you were thinking about. That is the ways in which I can use that hour most efficiently. So that ultimately, when you then see, oh, now let's talk about I policies in two months because that's when it's on the board calendar or policy agenda. Now you are, I'm helping you build your capacity of the things that you want to discuss in I policies once we get there. Okay? So, the last question, and this one, I'm going to ask it because it was asked on the sheet of paper. And I'm just literally asking the question that was on the paper. Do you respect the line between governance slash policy and operation? And I think Han's already, it's like you saw outside because he talked about it.
Yeah. So, it's a learned thing.
Right.
That's the reason why the training is important. That's why repeated training is important. That's a little bit why actually I have some disagreements in the book where their basic thesis is governance isn't paid attention to very well. I don't know that I believe that for this state. Certainly, that has not been my experience on this board. But, yeah, I mean, I respect it. I think it's critical. I think this whole thing falls apart if we don't respect those boundaries.
I agree. I think that's an important point. I think that the learning curve from being a parent, a community member, a community advocate to being a board member is a steep one. It's jaggedy too, maybe kind of fall off a little bit and then have to be put back in line. And that's why I think all of the turning that we do outside of sitting up here is important. I think you also have to be open to feedback from your other board members, from superintendents and the other cabinet members that says, hey, you know, I'll take care of this. This is my lane. The legal folks, and it's really in your best interest. It's designed to protect you and protect the interest of the, of the, I mean, that you're not driving mission of the board along, but it's just giving the team some room to do what they do, do what they do best. But I do think it's for all of us, it's been a learning curve to understand what is governance versus what is the CEO of the actual school district, which is superintendents, and how to still make the, keep through the promises that you intended to your constituents. So, sometimes it can happen.
What is your perspective on some of these questions?
Ah, love that question. So, I probably
I think things in like, I take a hands-off approach.
I'm pretty present in everything, so. You would never accept that. I don't take that. In preemptive damage control, I'm also one that knows decisions that are made as an adult, you make those decisions and you have to live with set consequences. So, I don't take that approach to life, nor do I take that approach, I would believe, to governance as, at all. That's not necessarily how I operate. Are there things a school board can do to make district management more difficult? Yes. I think the key piece is probably blurring, blurring that line, understanding the difference between the what and the how, and giving the space and grace to live out the how. So, for me, walking into this role sixteen months ago, I did not walk in and bring the, any of the issues or concerns of, that we do it. They were already here. The key piece to the role of operations and leadership is how are we going to navigate through them so that the district as a whole and the community as a whole is better because of it? So, prime example is the student member of the board. That wasn't a how that it was like, okay, I came in with this idea. No, but through the work through this board, through policy, through all of what we did operationally to have that system in place, I think it, it makes us better because of it. Conscious about making the most efficient use of my time. You all know, I live by my calendar. And the team that I probably spend the most time with on my calendar is up here with me right now. Secondly, it's those people that are out there that are somewhat smiling and saying, please don't look at me. That's truly, that's the majority of my time. And to make it most efficient is why we do structure those conversations in the way that we do so that we can make this day, meaning board day, as efficient as possible. So, that means nothing you see here, this should not be the first time you've ever seen it. You typically see it two to three iterations before it's here because we have to be most efficient with our time. My key takeaway, which was my last question, from Chapter Three, is that it does take a superintendent to understand each board member individually as well as understanding this board as a collective for what you desire. And what you desire is articulated in the strategic plan. And so, that is the document, if you will, that I'll probably hold closest to the work and really delineating how to get across those four strategic accelerators that you see every time and the things that were a must-have in the strategic plan. Number one, we have to refocus on students. Number two, equity is to be interwoven into the fabric of everything that we do. Number three, we will have skilled readers by third grade. There's one more, and I'm so mad I don't know it off the top of my head. But that should tell you how much I spend time with that document because that is what you've given to me to say, now, determine the how. All right, my last piece is, they came out with a two-point-oh of this book that was just published, like, last week. It was hot off the press. It's post-pandemic version versus pre-pandemic version. And I did some crosswalks. So, they added additional author. Just saying. He was happy. I'm just, so, yeah, that was it.
Give us a copy if you want us to read that one by next month.
Got it.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Hey, next month, board member Deelena will be facilitating Chapter Four, Welcoming New Trustees. Look forward to that. Yay. Dr. Whitaker, introduce the next item.
Yes, thank you, Chair Herndon. I would like to call on Mrs. Deelena to seek your feedback on a policy draft.
I'm just waiting for her. Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Colton, the C members of the board, student representative Deelena, and superintendent Dr. Deemo Whitaker. In accordance with the 2024-2025 policy calendar, policy code A, School District Organization, and B, School Board Operations, are scheduled for pre-work in the month of November. Today, we only have one policy on our pre-work agenda from these areas. Policy BBFB, Governance Team. As a reminder to the public, policies that are presented during pre-work are new business on which we are seeking board input. These policies are being presented as initial drafts. They are being shared to gather board input and feedback that can be reflected in drafting or revising future versions. The need for policy BBFB was first identified by examining existing policies with our surrounding districts from the policy audit that was conducted last year. Most of our benchmark districts have policy BBFA, Local School Councils in place, whereas we did not. Therefore, we pulled policy BBFA from surrounding districts and shared it with our SCLT, or System Charter Leadership Team, which is comprised of one member from each school's SLT or their governance team. These SCLT members provided feedback on what concepts or language they would like to see included in our initial draft. When drafting, it was determined that policy code BBFB was more appropriate than BBFA because we are a charter school system with governance teams as opposed to local school councils in place at the local school level. As drafted, policy BBFB states that the Board of Education recognizes that parents and community support are critical to the success of students and schools. It establishes local governance teams, referred to here as school leadership teams or SLTs, at each school, and indicates that they are responsible for complying and carrying out provisions of the district charter, including compliance with all applicable laws. It reaffirms the management and control of public schools is responsibility of the local Board of Education, but recognizes the SLT as the governance body closest which should seek to embed stakeholder voice into the strategic direction of the school while making decisions to support the continuous improvement of the school. It also indicates that SLT meetings shall be called and conducted in accordance with Open Meetings and Open Records Act. While SCLT member discussion informs the initial draft, our next step will be to bring the draft back to them, along with any input that you provide today. We will also invite legal review. Together, these feedback processes will inform the next round of revisions. So, at this time, I welcome any board input for policy BBFB, Governance Team.
So, if I'm just a random, I mean, we're a governance team, right? So, if I'm a random parent reading this, how would I know that this was specific to school-level governance teams versus, like, the board itself?
Sure. So, the policy name itself is given by GSBA. So, I can't alter the name Governance Team. The language in the first paragraph is drafted, and if it's not clear enough, does refer to each school shall have a local school governance team, refer to that to the bodies addressing it, but if we want to put a subheading like Local School Governance Teams, we could, we could do something like that.
I might suggest that just because I think we've done that before. Maybe on a whistleblower policy or something. Just because if I read this, I would probably presume it meant the board, not necessarily at a school level. So, just something that can indicate that this is the one you need to step into.
At a school level, perfect.
A few questions. I think, so this policy is specific to each school's school governance team or school leadership team SLT. So, then the SCLT, which is for the school's charter, is that the same body of individuals or is that a group made up of whichever SLT members are informing the SCLT?
So, this establishes governance teams, which is the SLT. It's just to say that every school will have one, basically, and that they have to follow the rules. SCLT is something that is in our charter contract. So, we say that we have an SCLT that involves one representative from each of the SLTs. That is something that is not required by the state as far as charter systems. That's something that we do above and beyond an extra.
I think we're, maybe I'm confusing policy with practice. So, one, just a clarification. So, the SLT is comprised of the principal, other school employees, and then the elected community members.
Elected members. They all have their own bylaws.
Right.
Right?
So, then, when we get to the SCLT, because I think as a member of this governing body, I'd like to know a little bit more, maybe that's not in the policy, of then how we learn the input from the SLTs and then the SCLTs. So, I think my first question is, when we have an SCLT, is it only the elected community members or a member of the SLT can be the school principal that is now the SCLT?
So, the SCLT is, it functions basically as a superintendent's advisory council for the SLTs when you think about it that way. So, each school selects someone to serve, and it's not the principal. It's one of the community members to serve on the SCLT.
And it wouldn't be a staff member?
It's not a staff member.
Okay, that's right. Thank you. And then, so, is there a reason that our policy doesn't include the? I understand the charter requires the SCLT. I guess I'm asking, why doesn't our policy recognize the SCLT?
The SCLT is not a government.
Required.
Yeah, one is not required, two is not functioning as governance. It's more functioning as advisory and it's to bring them all together for some coherence and consistency across the district, but only the SLT is functioning as a governance team?
I guess at one point, maybe.
I kind of wish they were more prescriptive about what activities we've wanted them to accomplish year to year. And I know each of the schools has their own bylaws and other things. This one, like, I read it a few times and found it, it's just sort of like the management and control of public school, right? It's like, that's it. They'll vote on the strategic direction of the school. I think policies and these are the four or five things that we would expect the SLT to get done.
Every year or is that? What's an example?
I think there are maybe
Sure. Go ahead.
No, because you were on one.
Yeah, so, when I got elected, it was shocking to me to know that we were working with the formula and providing feedback to the principal and the superintendent about how we taught the community, wanted the formula to work. My understanding is that they all did. We provide a certain number requisitions in each building. The principal works with the SLT to say, oh, we're going to keep, we're going to go above and beyond and keep a whole Spanish teacher instead of sharing a Spanish teacher. Here's the pluses and minuses. Here's the why. They make those decisions. I hear about it all the time, like, hey, why did the school board fire the Spanish teacher? I'm like, well, that's news to me. We haven't fired any Spanish teachers. Just so clear. I want to make that very clear, Zoe.
Does every SLT do that or is that just some that have selected to do that? I guess my question is, do we, the more prescriptive we get, the less we allow them to set their own direction. And so, that's the balance.
They have some self-governance kind of based on needs. So, like, what the high school needs is not the same as like what one of the parks needs. So, they have their own bylaws, right?
Yes. And think about it, just like you're the governance team for, at the district level, they're the governance team, so they're really establishing the what and they're doing, they're informing things around, you know, looking at the data and things like that just as we would. As far as being prescriptive, you know, again, they have, there are some things that we put into our charter as well that helps talk about some of the roles of the SLT. So, that's, some of it is outlined in the charter.
Because I was wondering, are there some, just some basic things that each SLT does? And if those and if those things, is that, like, if those things should be in there?
Mm-hmm.
Things like school budget is something that they would look at, things like talking about, like, you know, again, school improvement, kind of the data-driven academic piece of it would be something they would inform. Um, when you look more specifically, some of the bylaws, some of them talk about, you know, looking for field trips and things like that.
Wow. And I think to, yeah, I agree with James. Um, so when I was on our principal advisory council on another school district, it mapped out you looking at the budget, um, the hiring of a principal, and it may have been something to do with improving instruction, but if these SLT members are making up ultimately the SCLT, then yeah, I think we need a consist, they may have their own bylaws, but I think the school district, then if it's a governance team, and they're governance teams in the same, you know, district, then I think there needs to be some description of what they're doing.
I don't think so. I think that sounds like, that sounds like how it's, how it's ultimately, um, what is the word I'm looking for? It sounds like it's, that's how the policy's enforced. So you have this line here that says, "The SLT shall make decisions that support the continuous improvement of the school in accordance with the provisions of the district charter." So if the district charter tells you what they should be doing, like budget, um, staffing, then it falls back on each individual school to outline in their own bylaws exactly what, what that means to them. I think if we get into very specifics, like they have to say, do this, this, and this, it may take their individual kind of ability to navigate what they need and want. But it says there, generally, they have to make decisions that support the continuous improvement of the school in accordance with the district charter, so you have that outline.
Do we know what the charter says? Like, at one point, I know there was something on budget and, but do we know if the charter is already saying that the SLT needs to do this or that?
It does have some workaround, like, the input on.
It should input on what would be, once you identify the per pupil expenditure, um, and the, then the SLT would be able to say, okay, these are some of the things that I think this, you know, the school, local school budget should prioritize once you have it. But as far as, that's why we're seeking your feedback. You want it to be more prescriptive, understand that, um, what we did was provide samples to the SCLT, and they essentially, together drafted what would be this policy.
And it does need to go back to them again, because they underlined and talked, and we came up with different parts. I want to see this, I like having a why, you know, there was some discussion around that. I kind of cobbled it together for them, and so again, as we said, you know, except us bring it back and get feedback from them, along with your feedback. Can I just tell, sorry?
I tend to agree with Carmen. I mean, we do explicitly say that they're representing the voice of the parents in the strategic direction of the school, and that they have to make decisions to support the continuous improvement of the school. Um, if I were to add anything, I might say that they support the continuous improvement of the school in accordance with the provisions of the district charter and the system strategic plan. We don't want them moving outside of our strategic plan, but anything tighter than that, I feel like we're starting to get in their beeswax, in a way that maybe is starting to take away the voice of the local parents.
I could just say one last thing, though. Sorry, someone else was talking. I think it was to James's point, I, maybe prescriptivism isn't the right word. What I found, when I served on a pack that had these guardrails, is that it helped inform an agenda, and it helped the community know the mechanism that might be used to provide input. So it's less about telling them what they have to do, but more about ensuring that we have the substance of what we might need. That's really what I found, in my experience.
And that's what their individual bylaws are going to be for. They can reference their, like, you can go to the bylaws. And then it also says there, the management, the managerial duties of the schools are retained by each administration and delegated to the principal, so ultimately, the enforcement of this goes back to the principal. But you can go to each individual school and see what you're looking for, so that it's not coming from us.
I think there is one other question I have, and I know it's not specific to the policy, but maybe it's the C, and maybe it doesn't need to be regarded. So our school district has multiple schools, but it is only one high school and only one middle school. So when we're looking at something like the SCLT, we're having individual school input, but am I wrong to say that the majority of that input would be from an elementary school perspective? So you have one SLT for the high schools, you have one SLT for the middle school, and then how many elementary schools do we have?
But when you look at the makeup of majority of the parents that are fill these roles, they have children in all different levels. So, uh, today, I met with the PTO council, and I was, the person was there in front of me, she was like, oh, I'm filling in for the middle school, but I know she has a high school. So a parent is representing multiple.
The SCLT, the SCLT is also not like a legally binding body that's voting and holding the superintendent's.
Correct. It's only the school-level SIT as the governance body.
So I guess my question to the fellow board members, do we want to add the little statement about in accordance to the strat plan? Yes.
And there might be additional edits, and I'll be sure to see if it's provided with any feedback from the SCLT, and they'll bring to their SLTs any additional feedback that we get. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Yep.
Take a quick five-minute break, um, and we'll come back at, what, three thirty-six, remember, and turn for the work session. Thank you. Thank you, sorry. Thank you for joining us for our work session. Dr. Whitaker, introduce your first presentation.
Thank you, Chair Herndon. I would like to call on Mrs. Karen Newton-Scott, Deputy Superintendent, to share an overview of how we identify, monitor, and support high-quality instruction throughout city schools of Decatur.
Good evening, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Colton, esteemed Board members, Student Board Representative DeElena, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. Today, I will share insights into what constitutes high-quality instruction and how we support schools in recognizing its key characteristics. We will discuss methods for monitoring, where it is effectively implemented, and identifying patterns that highlight both its presence and areas of growth. By understanding these aspects, we can foster an environment that promotes continuous improvement in teaching practices and ultimately enhance student outcomes. Uh, so, it is football season. Our own Decatur Bulldogs are having a remarkable season, and the Atlanta Falcons aren't doing so bad either. Football fanatics, fanatics enjoy watching the game, the remarkable players, and each of the coaches who lead the team. So there are several well-known NFL coaches who have made a big impact on the game, coaches like Bill Belichick, Ike Tomlin, Andy Reid, and Pete Carroll are respected for their leadership, strategy, and ability to build successful teams. It's the coach's role to lead training, provide motivation and advice, hold team meetings, develop game plans, and most importantly, identify the individual abilities of each player in order to provide one-to-one coaching. Our affiliation with the University of Virginia's Partnership for Leadership in Education is much like the relationship between the coach and the players. Our UVA partners lead training, provide motivation and advice, conduct team meetings, support the development of ninety-six improvement plans, and support the identification of the individual abilities of each leader. Most importantly, the knowledge and insights we gain from this professional learning are not just theoretical, they are directly applied to our daily work in CSD. By transferring these strategies into actionable practices, we create a continuous cycle of improvement that enhances both leadership effectiveness and student success across our district. Like our UVA partners, we believe that educational leaders are key to addressing systemic inequities, and that there is great value in fostering a common purpose and building capacity within our team. We also actively engage in discussions of identity, history, and power to design more equitable systems that eliminate longstanding disparities. While we have laid a strong foundation for identifying and addressing inequities, we recognize the need for expert coaching to shift patterns of behavior and enhance our strategies for ensuring success for all students. One very practical action has been to close, has been to do a close examination of our priorities and where we place the bulk of our effort. Stephen Covey in The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People emphasizes the importance of putting first things first. By prioritizing initiatives that align with our core values and long-term goals, we can better allocate our time and resources to drive improvement and foster high-quality instruction in our schools. This focused approach ensures we maximize our impact and remain committed to supporting all students' success. So we examine priorities and frame them as our big rock. This first image illustrates what happens when smaller tasks fill up space first. As you can see, there is little to no room left for the bigger rocks or big priorities that have a greater impact. The image highlights how, without careful planning and prioritization, we risk spending our days putting out small fires rather than tackling the bigger challenges that could lead to significant progress or success. It is also a visual reminder of the need to allocate our time and energy wisely, ensuring that we prioritize the tasks that truly move us. When we prioritize the big rocks first, we create space for the smaller, yet still important tasks without compromising on what matters most. Once the big rocks are in place, there's still room to tackle the smaller tasks like answering emails, attending meetings, handling routine responsibilities, without feeling overwhelmed or distracted. These smaller tasks, while necessary, don't take up as much cognitive or emotional energy as the bigger ones, so they can fit in and around the more important work without crowding it out. Our partnership with UVA has also helped us identify our key priorities toward this year. We have focused on two main big rocks: delivering high-quality Tier One instruction and ensuring regular observation with meaningful feedback. Feedback. It's crucial that we are clear on what our students need to learn, how we will assess their understanding, and what steps we will take if they don't reach that understanding. To continuously improve, we must be actively involved in the instructional process and provide each other with feedback to ensure we are aligning around effective practices and quickly address areas of weaknesses. So, what exactly are we looking for when observing classroom practices? With so many factors influencing student learning, the possibilities can seem overwhelming. Educational researcher John Hattie identifies over two hundred and fifty factors that impact student achievement, each with varying effects. Given this vast number, it is not practical to monitor all of them. To narrow our focus, we analyze observational data from Dr. Whitaker's first canvass conducted in the spring of twenty twenty-three, along with additional data gathered during the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Combine this with current research on best practices, we identified nine high-leverage strategies that will guide our instructional approach and promote consistent, effective teaching across classrooms. These nine practices are specifically designed to enhance student engagement, address that first learning need, and ultimately improve student outcomes. Throughout this process, culturally relevant pedagogy serves as a common thread, ensuring that our approach is inclusive, responsive, and meaningful for every partner. So, how will we know that these nine strategies are effectively improving student outcomes? First, we need to observe them in action. Just as no good coach would guide a team or player without watching the game, we must do the same with instruction. Strategies are only as effective as their expert implementation. We have used a playbook similar to the one Dr. Whitaker used during the initial canvasses in the district, which was adapted from our partners at the University of Virginia. We have retained several elements from that process, including the main canvas. The initial canvas involves a full day spent in each school observing classrooms and conducting focus groups with students, teachers, and administrators. Now, we spread these engagement activities throughout the school year, which has become an element of the design work that our Harvard Fellow, Mrs. Pat Gail Yerthopson, is supporting in development. Before we begin in our time in school, we establish a set of norms to guide our interactions with each other and with our colleagues. These norms help us stay focused on our key priorities, Tier One instruction, and substantive feedback. We strive to balance our positive observations with areas of growth in our feedback. We use our instructional toolkit from the Teaching and Learning Department to ensure we are knowledgeable about standards, pacing, and intended learning outcomes. We also calibrate our scoring to reflect the extent to which each instructional strategy is observed, continually refining our collective understanding. Once we have established our norms, school leaders provide a schedule for classroom observations. School and district leaders work in pairs or triads, forming small teams based on the size of the school and the number of visits. Each team observes the classroom for ten minutes, then debriefs on the observation, calling each strategy as evident, somewhat evident, not evident, or not observed, before moving on to the next assignment. At the end of the observation, the pairs regroup to share one or two glows and growths from each team. We then analyze the collective score for all nine indicators to assess overall patterns of practice. In the school leader's prior assessment of their needs, we ask each school to narrow their focus to one to three indicators, specific to what they would like to celebrate and what they would like to continue to improve, recognizing that schools may be at different stages. They dress. We then provide specifically written feedback for those focus indicators and require school leaders to outline their next steps based on the opposite. Those of us at the district level then ask how we can support through each department implementation of these actions. We summarize the action steps and then establish a timeline for completion or check-ins on progress. It is important to note that. During this process, instead, our aim is to offer school leaders insight on observed patterns of practice, empowering the local school leadership teams to define what their next work might be. We had the pleasure to conduct walkthroughs in all of our schools, at this point in the year, at least twice, in the upper elementary, middle, and high schools. year, at least twice, in the upper elementary, middle, and high schools, because they are our nat schools that are engaged directly with the partnership within the UVA. Collectively, as a school district, these three areas have been observed as strengths from first through twelfth grade. Our instructional materials being used are aligned with the rigor of the work that is required of students. Resources are not too difficult or too easy, but seem just right for the task. Learning targets are written clearly so students understand what they are expected to learn, and it is at the rigor of what is required in the standards. And engagement strategies are effectively used to hold students' attention and interest in learning. Again, as a school district, these three areas are areas of opportunity for us to continue to grow in our instructional practices. The first being successful criteria, ensuring that there is clarity for students on what success looks like when completing instructional tasks, so that they can track their own learning and be advocates for what they need to achieve success. The use of probing questions to require learners to think critically and deepen their understanding. And the use of different strategies to address individual students' learning needs, ensuring that support and extension are present in the learning process. The outcomes of the canvases combined with student achievement data and teacher inputs inform the offering for further job-embedded professional development provided by both the local school instructional coaches and our district coordinators. This data also guides the development of the principal support framework, which offers coaching and collaboration in various aspects of school leadership. Additionally, of school leaders, professional learning needs are driven also by the data collected from observations, student performance, section surveys, and a focus on continuous improvement in leadership practices. As a part of our learning structure with our UVA partnership, this year we required our upper elementary, middle, and high school leaders to create a ninety-day continuous improvement cycle. This structure allows us to clearly define our focus and the specific actions we will take over the course of ninety days. By identifying actionable steps, assigning responsibilities, and establishing monitoring methods in manageable chunks, we can implement targeted actions with aligned support, track progress, and evaluate what needs to be designed next at the end of each cycle. Each plan should be written to be achievable within ninety days, helping to maintain focus and accountability. As we approach the end of the first ninety-day cycle, just before the holiday break, we will convene the schools to review their progress over the first ninety days and continue the cycle to develop their plans for second semester. So the K-two improvement planning process is based upon the EL framework for development. Base two, you will also participate in a ninety-day review of their school improvement effort. So in closing, our process for ensuring high-quality instruction goes beyond the canvases. It fundamentally relies on the work of those closest to the students, which would be the building leaders and the teachers. Just as football coaches support their successful players, district leaders must engage deeply with our schools to recognize the unique strengths of each leader and their team. This enables us to provide tailored coaching, professional learning support, and resources necessary for high-quality instruction provided in every classroom every day. Thank you for your attention, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
So on the high-leverage instructional strategies slide, it looks like kind of highlights this culturally-relevant pedagogy. I'm wondering, what are the building blocks of that foundation? What are the common understandings that the building leaders have in terms of what culturally-relevant pedagogy and how do you all come to that conclusion? Like what resources do you use to come to what culture?
So several schools have engaged in different work. And in the past, our equity team have been tasked with determining what set of sources that they would use to define that within their building. As you can imagine, many of our schools, the composition of our schools are different. And so therefore, we wanted to allow the flexibility for schools to identify the culturally-relevant pedagogy for the students that sit in front of them. So for West Chester, for instance, they have studied Renee Brown work around culturally-relevant pedagogy. The upper elementary school has engaged with, I looked at you and
At the brain.
Mm-mm, Saretta Hannan.
Right.
Saretta Hannan's work around culturally-relevant pedagogy. So we've had different experiences in schools based upon who's present. And we've had some common experiences through our foundational work around what does culturally-relevant pedagogy look like in prior professional development? So it continues to be a work that we read into. If we're looking at our standards and how we teach them, then how to make that relevant for the students who are sitting in front of them, wherever they may be. Like I said before, it looks different depending on
Yeah, I have a question. So if I'm looking at that same slide, and then I look at the slide above, which has our organizational practices, now we move to instructional strategies. And I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. You know, if there's something like a real-time check for understanding, sounds like a teacher-specific instructional strategy. But then under cultural pedagogy is materials and resources that are aligned. So that sounds like that could be teacher, school building, and district. So now, when I move to not campus observations, but the patterns of practice, excuse me, I know we're looking at standards-based learning this year, so I see, you know, the strength of these instructional materials. Am I inferring correctly that, you know, you've got the entire eleventh-grade social studies teachers teaching this, or the eighth-grade math teachers that are teaching this subject? Learning targets, which sounds, again, like something that the group can meet and facilitate. Now, when I move to the patterns of practice, is where I get confused. So success criteria, because my mind is a high school teacher, the parent of a high schooler, is that grade, the letter grade. And I'm guessing that would look different, success criteria, in a fifth-grade classroom. And I read success criteria as something that may be teacher, school building, and district, right? If it's, you know, I'm creating a rubric now, and it takes a lot of time to create an intelligible rubric that students can So now I move down to the support framework. And again, just to kind of reiterate this, what I'm getting at is that there is the teacher, there's the school building, and there's the district. So school culture and climate, you know, I am learning. It's taken me a few months, but the what versus the how. So what are we doing to determine that, the condition? Now, what are we doing to find out from the students and the teachers what other conditions they need? Because it looks like we've done a good job, right, based on the strength? Getting this material ready, getting the learning target ready.
So your question is, what are we doing for culture and climate?
Well, we're mostly good after the observations, right? So then, you know, and I love the fact that y'all aren't giving that, you know, to the teacher. So now the principal, the administrative team, instructional team at the building is getting that feedback, and then they're deciding, now what do we do, right? So how are the deliverers of the instruction informing the what we do?
So part of the process in canvases also has a focus group, you know, about the teachers and students, around all of these things. We also have session surveys where people can give anonymous feedback on any part of this process of what's happening overall for the culture and climate of the school. So as I stated in the beginning, Dr. Whitaker did that in one school day. You know, in each school, we spread that out throughout the year. So some days or some visits to the school would be just focus groups, and we're talking with just students. Or the next visit, we just talk with the teachers to inform the practice, to answer
Yeah, I think so. And then just one other thing about the ten minutes. Is there a distinction, and maybe it doesn't matter, between not evident and not observed? Like, it's not evident because it's a PE class, so you wouldn't have, I don't know, writing an essay versus not observed, or does that even, maybe we don't need to know that, I don't know.
Yeah, I, not observed means we didn't have an opportunity to observe. That wasn't appropriate. And not evident means that it should have been present, but it wasn't.
Thank you.
I have one more question. So in terms of the Canvas walkthroughs, I, because, kind of back to my question about what we're looking for in terms of, you know, culturally-relevant pedagogy as a foundation, and my question about, well, what are the common understandings? What, you know, when you walk through, because I didn't see on the example, but that may have just been a snapshot of one area of observation, you know, what you're looking for that indicates that, you know, and so, because my concern is, is that if it varies by school, there seems like there should be some common things that you're looking for.
Yes. Because those will be found, you only have a snapshot, like you said, here, under the teacher look for, the student look for. So we do define examples or provide examples so that we all have a common ground that we're working on. So for example, yesterday, yes, or Friday, we were at West Chester, and they also added additional things that they, their lens and what their students need, that they added to that list. So then, when we are at the school, then we take not only the baseline that we provided for the school, but also taking account what other things that they are using through their lens to be responsive to their learners in our walkthroughs. So there are teacher look for's and student look for's that tie back into culturally-relevant pedagogy, but you don't have to look up there.
Um, I have a question. So when the summary of visit is like created, and you identify the strength areas and then the opportunity areas, how does that, like, how do you, like, the visitors, the visitors who go to the school, how do they like compile all, everything they notice into like a summary like this? Like, how, how many like observations of like indicator one, because there have to be, for it to go into the summary?
So we require from the, at the walkthroughs, that each team marks a rating for each indicator. So if we observe a classroom on one team, then we have eight scores for each indicator. And then the process that they end is quite involved, but it's really good discussion because district people aren't saying, here are your strengths and your opportunities. It's a discussion of our district support and our school leaders to identify what those are. So we have a robust discussion. Our Harvard Fellow, Yerthamson, here, Pascal Yerthamson, she has been such a great support in synthesizing that discussion into the snapshot that we see here, which then is written information that the school team can go back and reference. What you don't see there is also a timeline to help guide them through, making sure that those things are done, because the work then is for the school leaders to go back and make those leadership moves.
And then like if there's an opportunity area, is, like, for example, I guess indicator one, indicator one was rated, was it out of eight?
So whatever, if we observe ten classrooms, you have ten ratings for indicator.
So it's like indicator one is rated below, like, one, if it, is there like a way to measure if indicator one isn't, isn't an opportunity area anymore, like measuring that?
Yes, so if you see to the, to the right, see just a snapshot of the circle graph? And so each visit within the school, the leaders get this output. And so you can compare from one visit to the other, what areas you've drawn in, what areas are more green than they were before, because green indicates evident. And we also give them a compiled turnout of all of the visits to date. So leaders can see that, and things do roll off, and other things then become priorities.
All right. So the Canvas visit is a high-leverage tool that allows Mrs. Newton Scott, her team, as well as members of instructional cabinet, to meaningfully partner to improve instruction and also coach the local administration of the school in whatever actions that they've named. Watching the Canvas evolve from my pre-entry days in CSD has been a joy, and I look forward to the continued evolution as we increase the engagement, the relevance, and even the impact on leadership development and teacher support here in CSD.
Thank you, Ms. Newton Scott. We're glad their system is in place for supporting the principals and other leaders in school. Dr. Whitaker, for the next presentation.
Thank you, Chair Herndon. This is Karen Newton Scott. Now we'll be joined with Mrs. Adina Walker, our Chief of Human Resources, to share one strategy for retaining high-quality personnel, and that is through high-quality professional learning.
Good evening again. Professional learning focuses on the comprehensive training and development of our staff. When we prioritize professional learning, it fundamentally transforms our approaches, leading through practices of house to board. This collective growth is reflected in every strategic accelerator as staff members apply their enhanced skills and knowledge in their interactions and responsibilities. By investing in high-quality professional learning, we not only enhance the skills and competence of our staff, but it also contributes to higher retention rates. When educators feel that their contributions are recognized and they have the tools they need to succeed, they are more likely to remain committed to our district and its mission. Over two full days this past summer, Dr. Banks, our Director of Equity and Professional Learning, led cabinet members, district leaders, and school administrators in thoroughly examining our current professional learning opportunities in CSD. The activities included exploring the characteristics of a healthy professional learning system, analyzing feedback from staff and teachers about what they valued and where they sought improvement, and brainstorming ways to enhance our professional learning structure. By considering multiple perspectives, we identified key problem areas and drafted potential solutions and strategies to improve professional learning in CSD, along with an explicit theory of action. So the team concluded, because CSD's current approach to organizing professional learning for all is unstructured, resulting in inequities in the quality, variety, and frequency of offerings for some CSD personnel, we need to have a group of stakeholders from every aspect of the work we do in CSD to continually work as a group to inventory our current offerings, conduct a need assessment, and study the best practices in professional learning. Then collectively, we can develop and propose guidelines, tools, and other vital resources that enable access to data-driven, job-embedded, high-quality professional learning for all CSD staff, so we can support fair development, enhance retention, and promote student growth and equitable learning outcomes for all. To meet these needs, the Equity and TEL Director will continue to lead the effort in gathering evidence and researching best practices for professional learning in CSD. A vital part of this initiative is our acceptance into a prestigious two-and-a-half-year fellowship with Learning Forward, a leading global organization for professional learning. This fellowship will offer valuable insights and strategies to effectively enhance our professional learning initiatives.
to effectively enhance our professional learning initiatives. Learning Forward offers a framework for establishing a sustainable professional learning structure featuring eleven standards for professional learning promoting high quality development. When effectively implemented, these standards can lead to positive changes in the educator's knowledge, skills, and attitude. This growth enhances instructional practices, ultimately resulting in better outcomes for the students. The eleven standards are categorized into three key areas. Rigorous content for each learner, transformational processes, and conditions for success. Monitoring progress in these three categories contributes to continued improvement throughout the professional learning system with student and educator data providing evidence about how well professional learning actually leads to excellence and equity. Through the spring of last school year, we administered a standard assessment inventory to gather insight on how CSD teachers perceive our alignment with Learning Forward standards for professional learning. The standard assessment inventory helps us measure our adherence to the standards, identify our strengths and areas for improvement, and begin to inventory the professional learning initiatives we currently have. A total of three hundred and nineteen staff members participated in the assessment and sample questions included. How effectively does professional learning address equity practices? How well do we support the implementation of new practices learned through professional development? How effectively does our leadership advocate for professional learning? And how well do we allocate and utilize resources for professional learning? The staff rated each question on a scale from zero to five, where zero means happening always. An average score of four point oh or higher indicates strong performance as a district. Scores between three point six and three point nine show significant progress and scores below three point six need immediate attention. Here are the results. So for rigorous content for each learner, we assess three standards. Equity practices, curriculum assessment and instruction, and professional expertise with an average score of three point two. For transformational practices, we evaluated four standards. Equity driver, evidence, learning design, and implementation resulting in an average score of three point oh. And for conditions for success, we looked at four standards. Equity foundation, culture of collaborative inquiry, leadership and resources, which resulted with an average score of three point three. All averages for each category indicate that significant improvement is needed. So as any building requires a strong foundation, so will CSD's professional learning system. And our research-based system for foundational factors are a theoretical framework underlying, informing, and molding our system's development. Foundational factor one is strategic alignment. We must ensure that our work aligns with the overall goals of our strategic plan, focusing specifically on professional learning initiatives that support and retain our high quality staff. Foundational factor two, equity, equity mindedness. We need to continue to identify patterns of inequity in our data, assume both personal and institutional responsibility for eliminating academic and disciplinary inequities and create an environment of belonging for students from traditionally marginalized populations. Foundational factor three, starting four standards. We must utilize a set of global standards that define the conditions, content, and processes of high quality teaching and learning in foundational factor four. According to the Every Student Succeed Act, professional learning should be sustained, not just standalone workshops. It should be intensive, collaborative, job embedded, data-driven, and focused on the classroom. These four factors establish a robust and research-based foundation for our work. Adina Walker, Chief of Human Resources, will come forward to discuss one aspect of job embedded support that has been revised or implemented for this year for teachers and students in CSD.
Thank you, Ms. Newton Scott. Good afternoon. According to a two thousand sixteen study by the Learning Policy Institute, new teachers who do not receive mentor, mentoring, or other support rate of those who do. A more recent study conducted by the Professional Learning and Educators of the Northern State in the fall of two thousand twenty-one found approximately thirty-one percent of all responding educators report that they are highly unlikely to remain in education for another five years, largely due to the fact of the lack of professional learning or designated support entering the profession. In support of this data, the HR department, in collaboration with the Department of Equity and Professional Learning, has revamped the teacher induction and mentorship program by providing a robust curriculum with the intention of improving retention of our new teachers and reducing teacher burnout. By building on the work of our former Director of Professional Learning, Marcia Fowler, the program now emphasizes mentorship that is relevant and job embedded. School administrators also play a key role in pairing mentors and mentees before day one of a school year to foster support and integration into the school community. Within a few weeks after the start of school, an orientation session brings together all of our new teachers across the district where they build connections, drive collaborative work, and it also sets expectations for the school year. During this session, the group receives essential resources from the HR department and professional learning. In addition, they also receive a new teacher mentor and mentee handbook to serve as a practical guide throughout the year. To maintain momentum, the program includes monthly engagements through a Google classroom where the group shares experiences, completes reflective exercises. The mentees also receive valuable feedback on all of their reflections while a message board offers space for announcements, encouragement, and ongoing communication. We are also pleased during the first week of December, we plan to host our first year forum. This is one of our most insightful initiatives. This event is designed for new employees, not only teachers, to share their first impressions, thoughts, ideas, and hopes about our district through open, honest, and direct dialogue. This protocol is guided by four E's: engagement, emotional health, effectiveness, and efficacy. The insights gathered from this session will help both the HR and Professional Learning Department understand what new teachers and staff need for the hint their CSD experience hire to retire. As you can see, CSD, the CSD Mentor Program requests our commitment to empowering our educators and staff from day one, ensuring they feel supported, valued, and prepared to thrive. By fostering strong connections and providing continuous guidance, our goal is to build a foundation for success for all of our staff. We are happy to answer any questions that you may.
With the um survey question, are those categories um defined somewhere? So say for equity practices, like I, what does that mean?
Um, so I, I thought we may need to clarify some of that. So equity practices really deal with what practices are present in the school that support equitable outcomes for students. So just for an example, some of the questions on the assessment is, "In my school, we engage in professional learning about why it is important to recognize students' identities and cultures as students." Another one is, um, professional learning in my school includes strategies for building relationships with families and caregivers. So all of those um around what the school provides for.
Okay. And then the foundational factors, those four foundational factors, does the, the survey generate where those questions, how those questions fall under those four categories? How did you come up with those four categories?
So the four foundational factors marry our priorities here in CSD with best practices and current research. The assessment is organized based upon those three categories and then under those three categories, they have areas that they um ask about. So for instance, um, the first category around rigorous content for each learner, there are questions around equity practices. So there are about six of those. Rigorous assessment and instruction, about six of those. Um, professional expertise. And then the next category, they ask questions about equity drivers and so it goes on and on. There's about six to seven questions for each standard under the three categories. So there are eleven standards total and then they're organized into three categories.
So say, but equity mindedness was one of our foundational factors. Language that we came up with or that the leaders.
Yes, because it's already present in our work, so it's part of what is currently in the practice. So that maintains as a core of what we want to make sure that we include learning and practices and how we are getting to our learning system and how we do it. And this instrument provides um also very strategic questions to keep focus in those areas.
Can we go back to two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight? So in looking at all averages are, if they need attention and below is what I'm seeing here. But I didn't see the survey tool itself. So is this a reflection on how well our teachers are grasping these concepts such that they're able to enforce it in the classroom in their teaching practice? Or is this more a reflection of how much they appreciate or understand the concept? Like, because if you can't do the survey tool, I don't really know what, what they were being surveyed on. Is it a reflection on what they know or appreciate or what they're trying to implement?
So it's a perception survey for several things, like how I feel as an individual, um, as far as how I think of school, it's providing adequate professional learning. But it also um gives perception for the whole, the school and the district. So it's a combination of personal perception around individuals, then personal perception around the school effort, and then personal perception around district.
So the takeaway from this is that we need to look at how we're teaching these equity practices such that the teachers feel empowered to implement them in the classroom. Am I interpreting these results correctly? I feel like I'm making some leaps without looking at the inventory.
We are, what this says is we need to design our professional learning system in a way that better addresses these areas from the teacher's perception. Thank you for that.
Okay.
So along those lines, am I right to say that slide six was asking then teach, the three hundred and so many teachers that answered this, their perception of the conditions for success in the category of culture of collaborative inquiry, leadership, and resources?
Right.
Okay. And so, you know, they're kind of, what I see as a consistent, which is, I think, why you identified it, is most, all the respondents seem to agree that seldom the sum does.
Yes.
Okay. And then when we look at the next slide, transformational processes. So that, I'm inferring, I think, kind of like Carmen was asking, then teachers are being asked how much professional development has helped them with the learning design or, okay. And then the next slide is rigorous content for each learner. So the first seems to focus on what am I being given? And then the next two seem to be my perception of my ability to do this based on the training. Is that?
So it's all around the design of professional learning, right? So it's, it's less about your ability to do the thing. So for instance, under learning design, in my school, professional learning is clearly tied to student outcomes. In my school, professional learning is clearly tied to teachers' learning goals. But it really is around how professional learning is delivered in these particular areas and not so much about what I feel I'm doing.
Also, it's noteworthy that the lowest score is under learning design.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I was gonna ask, so learning design is a good example. I think the other one, it was resources. But where you have these pretty wide confidence intervals, I find it interesting, a lot of them are very fairly tight. But where you have these wide confidence intervals, is that, are you seeing differences within different schools? Or do you have a sense of where some of those disparate perspectives of the teachers are coming from?
Yes, that's where we really drill down to the school level, identify the schools that are really showing up in the red more so than other schools.
Well, I mean, wouldn't, given that the median of all of these is red, right? I mean, I'm interpreting this correctly, right?
Yes.
The, the learning design piece is so disparate because some believe that the learning, the way we've designed professional learning has been effective, if you will, and, but it's a wide range. Like, that's why that bar is so, you know, that's what that's representing. I think that wide range really speaks to um variance and which is why, one of the things I said coming out of my ninety days was that we needed to build capacity of staff. And when I say build capacity of staff, we're talking about true professional learning system. Professional learning system design work is very different than just conducting a PD. Professional learning system design is ensuring that it's job embedded, that it's data driven, that it is um one that is tied to student outcomes. It was really what Mrs. Newton Scott said at the last part of that fourth factor slide that you referenced. Um, go forward one slide. There we go. Yes. So if you are going to design a professional learning system according to learning design research around PD, you're going to need to incorporate all four of those foundational factors to make sure that it is meaningful, it is relevant, and it would be sustained. And that, that work is really the, the beginning and the foundation of saying that you need, that's, that's why we need to establish professional learning systems and the data really speaks to that.
Um, one more question. But this, um, I thought about it because you mentioned that um equity and student support, I think it's equity and student support, um, is involved in, in this. How does the Equity Department interact with the UVA partnership?
So I am a part of the Equity Department, so I um, I represent as far as our partnership with UVA, that work, and I work closely with Dr. Banks on then what that work looks like in schools. We walk closely together on the Canvas visits. She's a part of giving that feedback. Um, she was a part of supporting us in designing the walking tool and the teacher and student look for. Um, so that's kind of how we work with Equity Alliance.
And my closing comments actually speak to that. So um with our work through UVA, we learned that a key talent manage, um, key talent so what Mrs. Walker spoke to um really came out of, one, the work of equity and professional learning, but also UVA says you should engage new teachers in in-depth, ongoing teacher induction that is meaningful. that is meaningful, multi-day, summer P D that's aligned to the school district's goals and vision as well as the school. And that's why we redesigned the induction program to align to the work of U V A, the work of equity and understanding what we now are learning more and more around learning forward standards and this true standard design for professional learning. And, and obviously, that's the definition, is key, is key. So that's a prime example of taking all of these learnings to say we are building a capacity building system that is different.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Newton Scott, Ms. Walker. High quality professional learning is definitely a retention strategy. I'm glad we're creating a system to support it. Dr. Whitaker, can you introduce the next presentation?
Yes, Chair Herndon, I'd like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to present where we are in the development of the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven academic calendar.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, and team members of the board, Student Representative Delena, and Superintendent Dr. Gina Whitaker. Today, I am excited to share with you information surrounding the development of the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven academic calendar and the considerations as we move toward adoption. The development of the academic calendar aligns with our strategic accelerator focused on organizational effectiveness and excellence. In addition, the parameters that go into developing the calendar also support our other strategic accelerators. For example, allowing teacher professional learning days supports our strategic accelerator of cultivating and retaining high-quality professionals. While planning for one hundred and eighty days of instruction supports student success in all areas. Today, we are sharing a draft proposal for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven academic calendar. The academic calendar for next year, for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, was approved by the Board of Education on January ninth, twenty twenty-four. To remind the public, we look to adopt academic calendars annually and approximately a year and a half prior to implementation so that our families and staff have access to them early. As such, once again, we are currently drafting and discussing the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven calendar. In preparing today's initial draft of this calendar for discussion, we consider district priorities, stakeholder feedback, and teacher advisory council feedback. First, we considered our district priorities. This includes striving for one hundred and eighty instructional days for students. As a charter system, we are able to waive this number of instructional days. However, we do seek to align with the state of Georgia's requirement that public schools provide one hundred and eighty days of instruction per school year. We also desire to distribute these school days as evenly as possible between the two semesters. Another district priority is the fall and winter break, which has been part of the C S D fabric and is valued by students, families, and staff alike. The next district priority is staff professional learning opportunities. We are committed to supporting teachers in their craft through professional learning in order to yield improved student outcomes for all students. Last, when possible and appropriate, we seek to align breaks to surrounding counties in the metro area. This is important for our staff, who may not live in the city of Decatur, and whose own children may not attend C S D schools. In addition to considering our district priorities while preparing a draft of the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven calendar, we also consider the data from the stakeholder survey completed last year. A reminder, we had nearly two thousand responses. The survey revealed the following preferences. Week-long breaks in September and February, ending before Memorial Day, and starting on or after August first. We also were to desire for reduction in the early release dates. While this year we have monthly early release dates, the calendar that was adopted for next school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, has a reduced number of early release dates. Similarly, we would recommend keeping early release dates at the reduced number approximately every other month for this twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar. We also recommend maintaining the digital learning day on election day, which is reflected in the draft calendar. This date counts towards the one hundred and eighty days of instruction for students and also allows staff the opportunity to engage in civic engagement or professional learning. Finally, we have received some feedback from the Teacher Advisory Council expressing a desire for additional teacher workdays during the academic year. And some teachers have expressed interest in dedicated conferencing time with parents. Teachers have expressed an appreciation for the digital learning day on election day. Together, the considerations I just highlighted have informed an initial draft for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven student academic calendar. This calendar is very similar to the calendar we have had in C S D for the past several years and is also similar to the calendar the board adopted last January for next school year. I am excited to report that the days have fallen overall in our favor for this year when we consider previous community feedback we have received. This draft includes one hundred and eighty school days, where semester one has eighty-eight days and semester two has ninety-two days. We are able to start in August. Monday, August third is proposed as the first day of school. And we are able to finish before the Memorial Day holiday. Thursday, May twenty-seventh is proposed of the last day, is proposed as the last day of school. Our break schedule will be similar to what we have done historically. There are full week breaks in September for fall break, in November for Thanksgiving break, in February for winter break, and in April. The semester break is currently just over two weeks for students, running currently from September thirtieth through Monday, January fourth. I would also like to point out that for this twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, Halloween falls on a Saturday. This year, we heard from several students and some families asking about Halloween as a regular school day. This will not be an issue for families in twenty-six, twenty-seven. I told you that they fell in our favor for this calendar. Please note, the current draft has the one hundred and eighty school days for students and ten additional days for teachers to fulfill their one hundred and ninety-day workday schedule. Based on some feedback we received from the Teacher Advisory Council, we will let and community feedback on where those teacher workdays may best fit in the calendar. Depending on if or where they are placed, it may impact one or more instructional days as currently drafted on the student calendar to maintain the one hundred and eighty days of school for students. For example, if we added a teacher workday to occur during the first semester, say in October, which could allow for conferencing or professional learning, we could then make Friday, December eighteenth, rather than Thursday, December seventeenth, for students, make it an early dismissal day. So we've got some options that we want to get some additional feedback on regarding that. Today, I presented draft one of the twenty-six, twenty-seven student academic calendar, and in just a moment, I will invite any board feedback. But next week, on Monday, November eighteenth, we will open a survey for stakeholders to provide their feedback on in responses to this draft. This survey will remain open through the Thanksgiving break and close on Tuesday. The feedback from this survey will be used to make any adjustments, including the placement of the teacher workdays. We value a collaborative approach to calendar development and will actively seek additional feedback, especially from our teachers. We anticipate bringing the final proposed calendar to the board in December for approval. Finally, once the final calendar is adopted, we will again develop a calendar companion. Initially rolled out this current academic year, the calendar companion is created in partnership with the Superintendent Interfaith Council. It is a resource that identifies major religious holidays for different faiths and considerations that should be given to students and staff of that faith. For example, considerations might include the likelihood of absences or observers participating in fasting or prayer during the school day. The companion is provided to school and district leaders as an awareness resource that should be used when scheduling district and school events. At this time, I welcome any board discussion or input to be considered for the draft twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven academic calendar or the calendar adoption process.
I love that we're looking at work days, because I just asked colleagues, what happened to the work days? But I do feel strongly that our teachers should be asked, because I think there's a distinction between professional learning day and work day, at least as a high school teacher. If you are grading one hundred and thirty essays and you think you can do that during a work day, but it turns out it's a professional learning day, so that's my first ask. My second ask is, as we are looking at professional learning, can we find out what teachers want about when? Maybe I'm old, but I find it very hard to get excited about professional learning that I'm squeezing in between two classes when I know I have these recommendations, this essay and this stuff. So I don't know if, you know, teachers would have different things to say. But I would really like a distinction between a work day and a professional learning day if Decatur teachers want that. Thank you.
Yeah, but can you clarify, teacher input, what's thought on, on the calendar?
Yeah, so we had received some initial feedback from the Teacher Advisory Council primarily, as well as, you know, like, street committee, right? So you hear things about some of that feedback. So the Teacher Advisory Council had raised some of those concerns, and so we wanted to acknowledge that and to make sure that we get the larger teacher voice to decide kind of some of the next steps of where that can, where it can be placed in the calendar.
Can you? Okay, I may have missed the explanation, but when you were discussing ensuring that we have run this through an interfaith council and had accommodated major holidays, that has been incorporated in this calendar, or that is going to be incorporated into this calendar?
It's part of the companion, so it's not necessarily that we are able to, say, be off on all of the religious, various religious holidays. Instead, it is provided as a resource to school and district leaders that they have at a glance. Here are the major religious holidays for this year. This is what it means to this particular faith. For example, we expect, you know, if it's a school day for students to be absent or staff to be absent. It's celebrated by a lot in the faith, so students might, might be fasting, for example, or might not be able to drink water, you know, things like that might happen, so the teachers are aware of that. So it is, goes along with the calendar at this point, so that they're aware when it comes to scheduling school events or classroom events or things like that.
So to, I would, I guess the way I would frame this is, it would be a priority of mine, and I submit it to the rest of the board, that to the extent possible, as we're building the calendar and selecting the specific professional learning days or what days that there are off, if you are easily able to align it to some of these major holidays, we should just take that stuff, right? Speaking as a parent, maybe some parents would prefer the kids not to be, you know, on some of these days. So I think there might be some identifying preferences, but if, if, you know, it's a Tuesday for a professional learning day and that happens to line up with a fast or something, is that, like, see what we can do to accommodate that.
So I would say, as a public school system, we provide all of the information. And when I say all of the information, from the interfaith council, from the Baha'i community to what would be the Christian community, to our Muslim community. I mean, there are multiple faiths, and so it's, it's very difficult for us as a school system to select a professional learning day that will align specifically to one religion. So that's why we just provide it as a companion for staff to be aware. I would caution the school system to try to align our professional learning days to any of the days in the, in the companion.
Fairly said, though, in reality, what we then have is a school system that's very aligned to the Christian calendar and not necessarily aligned to the Muslim, Jewish, or other faith calendar.
There, there are a lot of faiths in this digital school system.
Well, I guess the follow-up question to that is then, where, where can teachers easily access this companion? Because access isn't, it'll be a lot faster. Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. And this is just me with my teacher mind, and I'm a high school teacher, so I'm sorry. When I look at the calendar, I feel like I also need to know that, you know, these are the E F N A T dates, and this is the P S A T date. So when y'all are surveying, is there that, like, second level, because?
That happens, yeah, that'll happen next, so the main calendar is adopted, and then there's state windows and things like that that we have to abide by, and so that falls on, lays layered on top of this.
And that's twenty-six, twenty-seven, like, the state hasn't provided us those windows yet. All right, so the collaboration with the teacher advisory is key to creating what would be a calendar that's supportive to teaching, to learning, and all of the administrative duties that I know our teachers still have, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Dr. Whitaker, next presentation?
Yes, I would like to call on Dr. Lomita Broome to garner your feedback on the F Y twenty-six budget parameters and priorities.
Good evening, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, and team members of the board, Student Board Representative Delena, and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Budget Parameters and Priorities are the guidelines for building the Fiscal Year Twenty-Six budget and ensuring equitable allocation of funds based on the district priorities. The district budget parameters and priorities are applicable to all four strategic accelerators, with a specific focus on strategic accelerator four, organizational effectiveness through financial transparency, and the equitable allocation of funds. The draft budget parameters and priorities apply to all district budgets, including slots. Under strategic accelerator four, organizational effectiveness and excellence, the Fiscal Year Twenty-Six draft budget parameters and priorities are to present where revenue is equal to or greater than expenditure. Seek alternative funding sources such as grants and rebates. Maintain a fund balance per board policy D P L between four to fifteen percent of expenditures. Develop a revenue-neutral budget that will not require any tax increases. Ensure the budget is aligned with the district's four strategic accelerators. Invest in an E R P system, which is a financial and human resource system to manage the day-to-day business activities such as accounting, position control, payroll, procurement, accounts payable, and human resource. Ensure a transparent, modified, zero-based budgeting process, which requires justification of every operational request. Identify opportunities for cost savings. Under strategic accelerator three, cultivating and retaining high-quality professionals, the Fiscal Year Twenty-Six draft budget parameters and priorities are maintain competitive compensation structure for all employees. Fund state mandated increases for health benefits. Maximize revenue from Q B E by carefully managing student attendance in class sizes, accurately classify student programs and special needs, and optimize the teacher assignment based on student needs. Under strategic accelerator two, building and sustaining an engaging and inclusive culture the Fiscal Year Twenty-Six draft budget parameters and priorities are support the launch of a comprehensive social-emotional learning framework to have cultivate skills and environments that advance all students' learning and development. Invest in safety and security to ensure the protection, stability, and well-being of all students and staff. Although all strategic accelerators contribute either directly or indirectly to student success, specific budget parameters and priorities listed under strategic accelerator one, student and success, student success in all areas are invest in equitable outcomes for all students through various resources included strategies. Various strategies for closer achievement gap, strategic staffing, and early child, early college readiness insights via P S A T eight slash nine, which measures the skills and knowledge to show college and career readiness over time. Invest in an early childhood learning center to equip children early with the essential tools and skills that they will need throughout their academic journey in life. The parameters and priorities are not presented or listed in any ranking or order. State to provide your feedback with any additions, deletions, or modifications.
Where do we discuss revenue opportunities like tuition, for example? Yes.
Well, okay, yes, well, well, we're going, yes, we're gonna discuss that at the board retreat.
But, I mean, that would be potentially one of the ones.
Yeah, so if you go back two slides under such as, it's not an exhaustive list.
Such as, yes.
Yes, et cetera.
It's a big et cetera.
It's an et cetera.
I mean, listen, it's like, yeah, could we balance not raise taxes and pay teachers more? That'd be great.
Yeah.
Let's get on it.
Just work all along with it together.
So then, it's during the retreat that we'll be looking. So then, it's during the retreat that we'll be looking more specifically, okay?
And, can we talk more about at the retreat, in terms of what those investments look like?
So with the retreat, we'll come to begin with this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so essentially, these are the parameters and the priorities, and then we will bring ultimately, now starts the work of building the budget, but there are many different considerations. So example would be things around tuition, pieces around the school allotment guidelines, as well as our first look at compensation and where we landed from what we proposed from, for this year and how did we fall in comparison to the metro district. So the, all of those things are part of next Tuesday's conversation.
Thanks, Dr. Broom. Forward to the discussion of the retreat. Dr. Whitaker, we have one more presentation for the work session?
Yes, it, our policies for first read.
Good afternoon, again all. Today we have three policies on the agenda for work session. These policies were discussed in pre-work last month. One of these policies, JCEB, Student Hearing Procedure, is a revision to an existing policy. The other two policies, JQK, Exchange Students, and JGFG, Student Accidents, are new policies. These policies are being presented for first reads. If approved for first reads, these policies will be available for public comment through Assembly. Stakeholders can access any policies for public comment on the left-hand side of, or on the right-hand side of the Assembly homepage. Assembly is linked on our CSD Education. First is policy JCEB, Student Hearing Procedure. A distinct policy in CSD that was identified for needed updates and revisions. A revised version was presented last month during pre-work, however, additional revisions have been made based on further legal feedback. JCEB now outlines basic rights and duties under the disciplined hearing process. Some of the details from last month's draft were recommended for removal because they are better addressed in the Code of Conduct itself. May I read the recommendation?
Please.
The recommendation being made is that City Schools of Decatur Board of Education accept policy JCEB, Student Hearing Procedure, for first read.
Do I have a motion to approve to accept policy JCEB, Student Hearing Procedures for first read? Thank you, Board Member Oats, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Solton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Second is policy JQK, Exchange Students. Only a few minor wording revisions were made to this draft discussed last month. May I read the recommendation?
Please.
The recommendation being made is that City Schools of Decatur Board of Education accept policy JQK, Exchange Students, for first read.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve JQK?
So we'll-
Thank you, Dr. Davis, makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Oats. Second motion, any discussion?
Question, and I'm sorry, this is answered, we're referring to students who would be studying in the schools, not necessarily, like, students visiting for a week or two.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, request authorization for enrollment.
Yes.
Yes, we clear for that. Good question. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, like policy, Ms. Lynch?
Last is policy JGFG, Student Accidents. Language was reduced from the version presented last month during pre-work based on feedback from legal. Specifically, the previous version outlined procedures that are better addressed in regulations or internal processes. May I read the recommendation?
Please.
The recommendation being made is that City Schools of Decatur Board of Education accept policy JGFG, Student Accidents, for first read.
Do I have a motion to approve to accept policy JGFG? Thank you, Board Member Oats, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Solton. Second motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Lynch, for continuing to move us forward with our policies in consideration. We encourage the public to review the policies that we just opened up for discussion. They will be posted on Assembly. We will begin, in short recess, we will return at 5:05 PM to begin our regular board meeting. Thank you.
And he's definitely official Appleton, I'm just, so just-
Right, Sergio just took it, took my clock away. Okay, thanks, Glenn Snell. Before Tom Gale came and recruited you to the call.
I needed to sit down in the chair, so I needed to go in the chair.
I won't be going anywhere.
Around the chair.
All right. All right, we will now call this meeting to order at 5:05 PM. We ask that you find us on your cell phones. We'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I ask everyone, join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Were able to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, this is Latin, from United States of America, in the Republic of British Sands, on a nation, fair, and equitable, or never be unjustified for our own.
Thank you. Our mission is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences supported by highly qualified, caring educators in a safe and inviting environment. First item is approval of a board meeting agenda. Board members, there is a revision to the agenda this evening. We have added two consent items from executive session. To vote on, do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Do you approve the revised agenda?
Thank you, Board Member Oats, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Davis, second motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously. Next item is the minutes. Our agenda is the approval of minutes from previous board meetings. Do I have a motion to approve October's regular board minutes?
Do you approve October's regular board minutes?
Thank you, Board Member Oats, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Solton. Second motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Dr. Whitaker, we have several people who have joined us. I assume we have some recognitions this evening.
Yes, Chair Hernan, to facilitate tonight's recognition, I would like to call on Deputy Superintendent Karen Neaton-Scott, also she will be joined at times by Chief of Human Resources Adina Walker, and Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services Frances Holt.
Thank you, Board Chair Hernan, Vice Chair Dr. Solton, esteemed members of the Board, and Dr. Whitaker. I have the pleasure of making several presentations this evening from Decatur High School and Claremont Elementary. We will begin with Decatur High School, if Dr. School would please come forward. The AGC, Associated General Contractors of Georgia, Skills Challenge is a regional competition that is located in eight areas around the state. The challenge is a partnership with AGC and Georgia Skills USA, Career and Technical Student Organization, that provides students the ability to tie their learning in a co-curricular nature to real-world outcomes. The Decatur High School students competed at the event in the metro region. This year, Decatur High School took twenty-eight students to the competition with six students competing. Two competed in cabinet making, two in blueprint reading, and one in welding and one in electrical wiring. From that group, Harry Jeffers, please join us up front, and Tobiah Watts finished first and second respectively in cabinet making, and we also have their cabinets here on display this evening. They will advance to the upcoming state-level Skills USA competition in February. These students are currently in their third year in the fine furniture and cabinet making pathway and are sponsored and instructed by their wonderful teacher, Mr. Randall Archer. Congratulations on your achievements. We look forward to many more successes in the future. Earlier this school year, Coach Williams Felton was announced as the winner of both BOP Five and the Atlanta Fountain Coach of the Week voting, recognizing high school football coaches for their impact on and off the field. Coach Felton, please join us up front. Coach Felton actively engages with our local community, partnering with the Recreation Department to hold summer camps that introduce youth to the game and inspire the next generation of athletes. Coach Felton consistently seeks creative ways to raise funds for the program, seeks to create team bonding experiences that enhance the players' sense of unity and pride. As part of the program, within the Atlanta Journal-Constitution, as well, Atlanta Fountain, Coach Felton will receive a thousand dollar grant for Decatur High School's football program and recognition from the Atlanta Fountain and the AGC at an end-of-season banquet. Please join us in congratulating Coach Felton. Coach Felton also receives some exciting news from one of Decatur High's players, senior football player Ethan Johnson, has been selected to participate in the prestigious All-American Football All-Star Game held annually in San Antonio, Texas. Ethan, please come forward. This election is the highest honor a high school football player can achieve, with only the top athletes from across the country being chosen. To celebrate, the All-American Football Organization plans to visit the school this Friday to present Ethan with his official jersey. Decatur High School is excited for Ethan and this wonderful opportunity. We are so proud of you and we will be watching and cheering you on. Congratulations. Want to be outdone by Decatur High School, Claremont also has something they'd like to share with our board and I highlight and recognize the Claremont Bulldogs. Will begin with Sam first. Okay, Professor Lapwood, will you join us up front? This year, several prestigious initiatives have submitted a grant request for an innovative project for Claremont students. We would like to acknowledge Monica Nelson, Holly Howell, and Lori Biggum. All three of these amazing educators are recipients of DTF grants. Monica Nelson received funding to put on this year's musical, The Magic Treehouse, Dinosaurs Before Dark. We invite all board members to attend this coming-
And on Thursday, the twenty-third, at six PM. Just read in our newsletter.
Thank you. We have an amazing group of student actors at Claremont. Holly Howell was awarded funding to purchase eight djembe drums to start a student drum circle. This will support our SEO practices because to have a successful drum circle, students must practice and engage in active listening and work collaboratively. And finally, Lori Biggum received funding for three additional hydroponic vertical garden towers. This will allow all students to participate in gardening and experience the fruits of their labor. Thank you very much, these educators for their vision of innovation for the Claremont Bulldogs. Claremont also initiated their first Student Camera Club, introducing students to photography and visual storytelling. A key goal of the club is to highlight the joy of learning through Claremont Elementary. The club foster collaboration, teamwork, and self-expression, inviting all students to join. We want to recognize members of the club by starting with Oliver Bennett. Okay, the band, Zunilo Hendricks. Antonio Tuck. Ella Kim. Tim Jordan. Musteen Sharifi. Hidya Wade. And Grayson Zachary. We have some budding psychologists at Claremont. This enriching activity is also led by, by a fantastic parent volunteer, Sarah Wade. Special thanks to Sarah for her dedication and leadership in this exciting venture. Congratulations to you all. Okay, at this time, we will pause and invite our board members and Dr. Whitaker to take our honorary Astor photo. Take one. We will honor our school psychologist and our professional employees of the year. So, Dr. Whitaker and the board, please join us up front. Fancy to be led to grow-
...expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to help children and youth succeed socially, behaviorally, and academically. School psychologists are also highly trained in database decision-making, including behavioral operationalization, and data collection analysis. This year's discovery is meant to evoke a sense of pride in school psychologist scientist, science practitioner training. School psychologists support their communities in exploring connections and pursuing new ideas. Ms. Frances Holt will- ...our CSD School Psychology Team. They are Ben Knabel, District Sec-, uh, District Section 504, and School Psychology Coordinator. Leslie Hart. Dr. Janil McKenzie. Mickey Wingard. And Christine Bailey. We also recognize the following for the support to the team, Rebecca Fitch-Undery, our substitute psychologist, and Ava Shiver, our practicum student. And now, our Chief of Human Resources, yeah, it's another whole group, yes. So, and now, our Chief of Human Resources, Mrs. Adina Walker, will present our next recognition, and she will be joined by Megan. Does that say Megan in there? No? No, okay. But our Decatur Education Foundation has helped us celebrate our next set of attendees.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. We're excited about this opportunity to recognize our classified professionals who contribute tremendously every day to our district. In October, there is a call for nominations for the Professional Employee of the Year Award. This award recognizes outstanding individuals who demonstrate leadership within the school or school system, works as a collaborative team member in the school or department, works well with staff, parents, and administrators, and provide evidence of student achievement or exceptional job performance. This year, not only are our school, but we extended this recognition to our transportation, maintenance, and wellness center staff. Here to congratulate our Professional Employees of the Year is Megan. Is Megan here? Well, they have already supported our Professional of the Year through their token and gift of appreciation, so we thank them for their continued support. Now, we will introduce the Professional Employee of the Year from each location. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate and your gift from D E F and remain in place for a photo with the board and Dr. Whitaker. First, we have Ms. Leslie Joyner. Media photo of College High's only year of study. Ms. Joyner is a person who goes above and beyond her assigned duties each and every day. Ms. Joyner collaborates with the staff to ensure the students have books and resources they need to be successful. She is a vital part of our school family and continually collaborates with district and community leaders. Last year, Ms. Joyner co-chaired the school's D E I Community Committee and partnered with the Decatur Housing Authority to support opportunities and materials for family literacy events. Leslie is a true team player and a role model for students who love her. Let's give her a hand. We have Ms. Brittany Miller, Stella substitute at Claremont Elementary. Ms. Miller was playing a willingness and dedication to support wherever needed in the building. As a Stella substitute, her schedule is subject to change daily. However, she accepts this aspect of her job with grace and professionalism. She is dependable, considerate, and flexible. She has been instrumental in creating the conditions for students to be successful during second grade math blocks for the last several weeks. She is everywhere in Claremont and can always be counted on to not only fill in as needed, but go way beyond what is required. Claremont is a better school community because of her. Next, we have Mr. Kirk Deltzer, parent professional at Glenwood Elementary. He is a parent professional at Glenwood Elementary. He has set tremendous job ability, trusty relationships with his students that bring out their best. He exhibits patience and kindness and gets in his firm when he needs to be and holds his students accountable. He helps all students have meaningful and rewarding learning experiences at school. He actively participates in each class where he supports students by doing the work along with them. He has worked at D H S, Winona Park, and Glenwood in Special Education, and at D H S in Beacon Hill through coaching. Let's give him another hand. Next, we have Mr. Craig Morgan, Special Education Care Professional at Oakhurst Elementary. Mr. Morgan is the kind of staff member who shows up every day with a smile on his face, ready to work hard each and every day. Mr. Morgan makes the impossible, makes the impossible look possible, encourages others, and points out the silver lining in every situation. Mr. Morgan is a standout in so many ways, especially how he puts students first so they can live up to our shared belief in being who's the care for all means all. The Oakhurst Crew is so incredibly grateful to have Mr. Morgan on the team. Let's give him a hand. Next, we have Ms. Alana Smarter, food service worker at Westchester Elementary. She is unable to be here, so let's still give her a round of applause. Ms. Alana goes above and beyond to keep Westchester students and staff sad and happy. She does it with kindness and a smile. She is able to keep a well-run and well-organized kitchen in spite of occasional hiccups with ingredients and delivery. Ms. Alana's work ethic and dedication to the school makes her an exceptional member of the Westchester Crew. She is not only a very sweet and patient, she is not only sweet and patient with the staff, but is also compassionate to all students. She does it with a big smile and kind words. Let's give her a hand in her act. Next, we have Ms. Lori Shiver, media clerk at Winona Park Elementary. Lori is incredibly helpful and is willing to dive in wherever a student and staff need her. Lori is always working with students, supporting teachers, and present whenever the school has a need. Lori is incredibly knowledgeable about books, and even is keenly aware of which students are able to read which book. She is incredibly every time someone walks into the library, she is friendly, helpful, and knows exactly where to find what someone wants, whether it's a technology need or a book to check out. She is efficient, knowledgeable, and helpful. Let's give her a hand. We have Ms. Ethel Johnson, bookkeeper at Tally Street Elementary. Ethel has been the Tally Street Bookkeeper since the school opened in 2000. She is the first smiling face you see in the first-person degree even you arrive in the morning at school. Ethel is committed to making a positive difference in the lives of others. She consistently demonstrates a remarkable ability to engage and support staff and students across various settings in Tally. She serves as the chairperson of the Sunshine Committee, and she also serves in the school's Diversity Activities Committee, where she works tirelessly to collaborate, strategize, and plan activities to bring cultural awareness, diversity, and inclusion in Tally Street. Ethel is a team player who volunteers to help anyone. Let's give her a hand. We have Ms. Malik Morrow, school manager at East Avenue She has been the school manager for seven years, and she is also the first face you see every morning. She greets everyone with a smile, a warm hello, and sets the tone with a positive day. Malik treats everyone with kindness and respect, always ready with an answer to the even most obscure questions. If she doesn't know the answer, she takes the time to research it, ensure the right solution is found. As the head of the Sunshine Committee, Malik frequently provides treats and organizes special experiences to show appreciation to staff. Her dedication and unwavering commitment to creating a welcoming and positive atmosphere make her the cornerstone of our community at bay. Let's give her a hand. Next, we have Ms. Jackie White, school manager Ms. Jackie has dedicated over 40 years to supporting the cornerstone of the Decatur community. Her unwavering support and guidance has positively impacted countless students and parents. She manages the front office with ease and grace, treating everyone with respect and always wearing a long smile. Her exceptional commitment and work ethic set an standard that is truly one of a kind. Ms. Jackie's love for Beacon Hill is as profound as the love of Beacon Hill has for her. She truly embodies the beacon in Beacon Hill. Next, we have Mr. Darius Duffy, lead custodian of Mr. Duffy is one of the rock bench heats of school running. D H S staff has made the following comments about Mr. Duffy. He cares about the students and tries to lift up everyone that will allow him to give them grace. He never rests, he is always doing something in the hallway to make the school stop, rest, and efficient as possible for learning, as he sets up students and administrative staffers to sit. Mr. Duffy is a constant in the school and is always willing to be part of the community, even playing the keyboard with the faculty staff. That began. Mr. Duffy cares about the engagement of the community and all the students and staff. Let's give him a big round of Next, we have Mr. Cedric Dunin, Maintenance Technician. Let's give him a hand. He is being recognized by his department for his outstanding contributions, exceptional work ethic, and dedication to our district and the facilities department as a whole. Facilities and maintenance departments are better because of Cedric's commitment, dedication, and pursuit of professionalism. Let's give him my hand. Next, we have Ms. Melita Jones, Transportation Specialist. She explores and manages resources, payroll, and dispatch, and supports the director and transportation staff. Her professionalism and efficiency are unmatched. What truly distinguishes Melita is her exceptional customer service. She gives her full attention to all stakeholders and goes above and beyond to ensure a positive experience with everyone. She is also a strong advocate for our drivers, working to create a pleasant and supportive work environment. Melita's passion for her role and commitment to the district is truly inspiring. Thank you, Melita. And last but not least, Ms. Brittany Carroll, Employee Relations and Lead Management Coordinator. Since joining the HR department in 2020, Brittany has become an essential part of the team. She works closely with the principals and department leaders to ensure quality coverage during employee leave, always with a positive and approachable attitude, known as the go-to person for principals and departments when it comes to subsidies, leaves, and certification. She consistently demonstrates her commitment to the C S D community, and she values feedback from the staff, parents, and administrators in ensuring that all students are supported in any way that she can. She does it all with a warm and welcoming smile. Thank you, Brittany. So, let's please again congratulate all of our 2024, 2025 Professional Employees of the Year. Alrighty, come on, Megan. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Megan.
Let's give them another round of applause. Congratulations. Please welcome back the board and Mr. Whitaker to come down and take a picture with our school psychologists and our 2025 Professional Employees of the Year.
Wait, oh, we're doing it one at a time? On, on that.
Okay, so the next person will come exactly where Leslie is.
Alright. Excellent. Congratulations.
Alright.
Congratulations.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, come on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Hello. Alright, congratulations.
Watching how everyone is holding everything right straight, that's all. Congratulations.
Alright.
Alright, congratulations.
Oh, one at a time here, sir? Oh, no, no, I forgot.
How are you?
Great.
Hello.
You wanna hold it like this?
Have a blessed one. Probably good work. Oh, boy.
Congratulations.
Ben, you can come in a little.
I'm humbled, I'm humbled.
For a high
Right here. I'm kind of good here for them to call. Alright, thank you all. Alright, next item on the agenda. All right, next item on the agenda. All right, next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Whitaker, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Chair Herndon. Tonight, we are proud to announce the results of the ACT for the class of 2024 and the preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, otherwise known as the PSAT. According to the results from the Georgia Department of Education, Decatur High School students had an impressive average ACT score of 24.6, earning CSD the number one spot for the highest average ACT score out of 172 participating public school districts across the state. This marks a significant increase of .9 points from the previous year and positions the district as a statewide leader in academic performance. The ACT is a standardized test widely used for college admissions in the United States with scores ranging from 1 to 36. At Decatur High School, sophomores and juniors take an important exam, the PSAT, in mid-October. The PSAT is free to all sophomores in Georgia and the City Schools of Decatur pays for all juniors to take the test. The PSAT is scored in a range from 320 to a 1520. City Schools of Decatur achieved a district average of 1056, surpassing the state and national averages of 977 and 965 respectively, and an increase of 15 points. The PSAT is the sole qualifying exam for the National Merit Scholarship Program, an academic competition for recognition and scholarships managed by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. In addition to being a gateway to the National Merit Scholarship taking, the PSAT actually opens up an access to over $300 million in additional scholarship opportunities for college-bound students. We are also proud of Tally Street and Beacon Hill Middle for their recent recognition by the Georgia Department of Education. Congratulations to Tally Street Elementary for being named a State Literacy Leader School and kudos to Beacon Hill Middle School for being recognized as a state math leader school. We applaud the students, staff, and families at both schools for this achievement. CSD's own Ella Harley, Student Engagement Coach, is nominated for Georgia Leadership Institute for School Improvement's Hidden Heroes Award, which recognizes those who make a lasting impact on our students and schools. Ms. Harley plays a vital role in supporting some of our most vulnerable students and their families, helping them navigate and access the school system's resources and ensuring that no student is left behind. Her work across the school district requires frequent check-ins with students and their families to support them with attendance, academic success, and social and emotional needs. Ms. Harley's selfishness and dedication profoundly impacts students' lives, empowering them to navigate their journeys with confidence and resilience. We need the City Schools of Decatur Community to vote daily for Ms. Harley through Friday, November 22 at 5:00 p.m. Check our social media platforms for the link to vote. Like every month, we have a few observances to highlight for November. Yesterday was Veterans Day and we join, when we join the nation, in expressing our gratitude to our close veterans for their bravery, dedication, and sacrifices in service to our country. American Education is a week-long celebration of public education that takes place during the third full week of November. And in 2024, we will celebrate this from November 18th to the 20, uh, 18th through the 22nd. This month, we also recognize the vital engagement of our parents and families in being in the education and the well-being of our students. Before I, in my remarks, I want to mention that last week's Remote Digital Learning Day underscored the district's commitment to allowing all staff to practice civic engagement. The election results are understandably prompted a mix of emotions and opinions within our diverse school community, which embodies a multitude of viewpoints, perspectives, and beliefs that add to the complexity of the issues. I want to remind families that additional support is available for students needing help processing their emotions and feelings during this time. Each campus has trained and certified school counselors along with access to mental health professionals. I also want to remind staff that while it is true that we have individual rights that are protected by the United States Constitution, as a government employees of a public, state, and taxpayer-funded school district, we have a state mandate to remain neutral on all issues. We have an equal obligation to deliberately focus on the well-being of our students first and promote a safe coexistence united by our shared humanity. This means remaining neutral on all issues for our students, regardless of our individual beliefs. Some of you may be surprised to see me, Dr. Whitaker, at a board meeting in a t-shirt. I am wearing the same t-shirt I wore on opening day with the Board of Education and every staff member. We kicked off the school year. We opened the school year with the understanding that "all means all" is more than a mantra. As I've said before, we are so committed that we actually put it on a t-shirt. Just as I said on July 27, we must continue to refocus our efforts to include positive outcomes for students emotionally and academically, providing safe spaces where teachers understand our collective responsibility to, number one, promote a sense of belonging for all students. Promote environments that are conducive to learning with a focus on promoting a climate of trust and teamwork within the classrooms for all students. Thirdly, model caring, fairness, respect, and enthusiasm for all students. Cultivate all students into future-driven scholars. And lastly, exhibit a commitment to professional ethics and our district mission to support all students. These are among the professional standards provided by the Georgia Department of Education and the Georgia Professional Standards Commission to guide our work of every teacher in the state. This is how we measure and evaluate teacher performance and effectiveness in supporting all students with respect for and understanding of students' diversity, including but not limiting to race, color, religion, sex, national origin, or disability. Chair Herndon, that completes my report, and I hope everyone enjoys a restful Thanksgiving break.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you all for joining us in person and virtually to learn about the progress of our strategic goals. The Board, of course, shares the accolades that we have shared for students, staff, families, and communities we work towards positive academic and social-emotional outcomes for all. As we know, last week, we go today with an election. A constitutional amendment based on House Bill 581 was included on the ballot in Georgia, which the Georgia General Assembly passed in the 2024 session. Ultimately, HB 581 created a statewide floating homestead exemption, which directly impacts school districts as an inflation cap based on the Consumer Price Index on all property tax assessments. As with all constitutional amendments, the bill required voter approval, and 55% of the voters of the city of Decatur voted in favor of the amendment. It will go into effect on January 1, 2025. However, as was explained and discussed during a presentation in October board meeting and work session, HB 581 allows cities, counties, and school districts a one-time option to opt out of the cap. Therefore, per the legal procedures to opt out of the exemption, the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education will advertise and hold three public hearings, two on January 14, one in the AM, one in the PM, and one the evening of January 21. I invite the public to review the full board presentation from the October work session on the district's website and assembly. It includes the projected financial impact of the exemption on our school district. Earlier today during our pre-work, we continued our book study on the Governance Core. Pre-work included a review of the initial draft of a policy on school-level governance themes and SLTs. There were four presentations during the work session. The first outlined how the administration monitors high-quality instruction in our schools, how our district teams support supporters in a continuous improvement cycle. The second presentation, it was co-led by the district's Equity and Human Resources Department. It provided an overview of the revised approach to professional learning. During the next two presentations, the Board received an initial draft of the 2026, 2027 academic calendar for review, a summary of the FY '26 budget parameters and priorities. We also accepted three J policies on student hearing procedures, exchange students, and student accident that are available for first read. All of those, including past meetings, are available in assembly for public perusal and comment. Last month, our school community hosted a variety of Hispanic Heritage Month and Diwali festivities and celebrations. In November, we celebrate Native American Heritage Month, honoring the culture, traditions, and achievements of Native Americans, Alaska natives, Native Hawaiians, and affiliated island communities. We also recognize the contributions of indigenous people to the U.S. and the world. There are so many amazing things happening around CSD. That was evidenced in our board recognition, from school clubs and teacher grants to Decatur High School being selected to participate in the All-American Football Game. This evening, I want to also congratulate our varsity boys and girls cross-country team for being region champions. I want to pause to personally congratulate our student board representative, Board Member Dialena, who placed second in the region. Congratulations, Sophie. Both teams went on to the state competition. The boys placed 11th, but the girls earned an impressive third-place finish. Thank you for representing us so well. When she hasn't been in class or running the country, I understand Sophie has been actively fulfilling her duties as the board's student representative with school visits. One of her first stops was at her elementary alma mater, Westchester. While there, Sophie and school board apprentice Nia Batra met with students to better understand their issues and the areas in which she could advocate on their behalf. Besides being commendable, Sophie clearly understands the importance of stakeholder engagement in public service. Along with our school psychologist, we are joining the city of Decatur, the entire community, and celebrating our dedicated crossing guards this week. Please take a moment this week to stop and show your gratitude to these hard-working professionals and their commitment keeping our children safe as they travel to and from school every single day. Finally, the next board retreat will be held next Tuesday, November 19, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Hospitality Suite at Decatur High School. This concludes my remarks for the evening. Board members, do you have any additional thoughts to share on this agenda? Hearing none, board, we will move to the consent agenda items, which include monthly items such as finance, nutrition, personnel, and overnight out-of-state student travel. I will solicit comments from board on each item. After the item has been discussed, it will be then moved to consent. There will be a motion to accept the consent agenda items at the end of all discussion of all items. Dr. Whitaker, do we have a monthly financial report?
Yes, Chair Herndon. Dr. Melita Broom, Chief Financial Officer, will present a monthly financial report. You want to do that one first?
Good evening. The September 2024 financial reports and definitions of function codes are located in the assembly agenda. The Finance Department operates based on the district's four strategic accelerators with a specific focus on accelerator four, organization with effectiveness and excellence, with financial transparency. The general fund budget is $106,607,736. As of September, the district collected 30% or approximately $31 billion of the budgeted revenue year-to-date, which is in line with the percentage that was collected this time last year. September revenue is 67% more than the amount of revenue collected for August due to the increased earnings and the state QDE revenue from September through June to cover salaries and benefits of earned employees. All other revenues trend as anticipated. Expenditures are normal for this time of the year. The district has expended 21% of the overall budget or approximately $19 million year-to-date. For the month of September, expenses equated to approximately $8 million. This is slightly higher than that was, that was, that which was expended last year due primarily to salary and benefit increases. The majority of September expenditures are for salaries and benefits of 10-month employees whose new fiscal year 25 salaries started in September. For the month of September, there was a deficit of approximately $4 million, which means the district's expenditures for the month were $4 million more than the monthly revenue. Last year at this time, the deficit was $3.5 million. The $4 million has been deducted from the fund balance, which is normal for this time of the year. Overall year-to-date, there is a surplus of approximately $12 million due primarily to the large receipt of property tax collections posted in July. Last year this time, there was a surplus of $15 million. The surplus of revenue is normal at this time of the year in account for the healthy fund balance of approximately $31 million, which includes the unodded beginning fund balance of approximately $19 million. Fund balance will continue to decrease as expenditures increase. September revenue for capital and debt funds consisted of $518,027 from earnings on investments and swap-sit collections. Expenditures are normal for this time of the year, and the $661,236 deficit was deducted from the fund balance, which was approximately $6 million in September. Fiscal year 25 anticipated expenditures for capital is approximately $12.7 million. Special revenue funds are grants and debt funds, including federal and state grants not budgeted in the general fund. And September, fiscal year 24 grants with an expiration date of September 30. We will continue to receive reimbursements throughout the year and are preparing for a receipt of fiscal year 25 grants, which are effective October 1. School nutrition revenues are coming in less than projected and expenditures are extending within the same range as previous years. The school nutrition budget is being analyzed and will most likely need financial support from the general fund. The $91,096 deficit for September decreased school nutrition fund balance to $1.8 million. Last year this time, school nutrition fund balance was $1.6 million. We'll be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification as needed.
Do I have any questions about September? Do you want to go on to the next?
We have closed the books for fiscal year twenty-four, and financial transactions are currently being audited by the district's external auditors, Marvin and Jean, who are scheduled to present the finances of the audit and final closeout numbers for fiscal year twenty-two at the January board meeting. The numbers presented this evening are unodded and subject to change. Although the budget and all financial transactions impact all four strategic accelerators, the fiscal year twenty-two budget process falls under organizational effectiveness and estimate, with a specific focus on financial equity and transparency. A budget is a spending plan based on estimated revenues and expenses. It is an estimate of how much the district anticipates receiving in revenue and how much we project to spend for one fiscal year. If the district spends more than anticipated, the additional funds are rebounded. If the district spends less than anticipated, the additional funds are added to the fund balance. The Board's final approval of the fiscal year twenty-four budget consisted of total anticipated revenue of one hundred million, five hundred and three thousand, and one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and total projected expenditures of one hundred million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, and six hundred dollars. The beginning fund balance for fiscal year twenty-two, which was the ending fund balance for fiscal year twenty-three, was fourteen point nine million dollars, as shown in purple from the small box to the right titled fiscal year twenty-four. Based on the fiscal year twenty-four budget, a surplus of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, shown in orange, was estimated to be added back to the fund balance, resulting in a projected ending fund balance of fourteen million, nine hundred, twenty-seven thousand, and five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, shown in green. This leaves the fund balance at fourteen point eighty-six percent, which is within the Board policy requirement of four to fifteen percent. The Board's final approval of the consisted of total anticipated revenue of one hundred and three million, seven hundred, thirty-one thousand, and seven hundred and nineteen dollars. This is a three point two one percentage from fiscal year twenty-four. Total projected expenditures consisted of one hundred six million, seven hundred, fifty-one thousand, and three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. This is a six point two five percent increase in expenditures from fiscal year twenty-four, due primarily to salary and benefit increases for fiscal year twenty-five. Going back to the small box to the right, under the title fiscal year twenty-five, as shown, the beginning fund balance for fiscal year twenty-five is fourteen million, nine hundred, twenty-seven thousand, and five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Again, the ending fund balance for fiscal year twenty-four is the beginning fund balance for fiscal year twenty-five. Based on the fiscal year twenty-four budget, three million, nineteen thousand, and six hundred and eighty dollars will be deducted from the fund balance, which would result in ending fund balance of eleven million, nine hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred, fifty-eight dollars, leaving us with a fund balance percentage of eleven percent. This slide represents budgets, which are projections and estimates. Now that we have closed fiscal year twenty-two and posted all revenue and expenditures, we can compare actual revenue and expenditures with budgeted revenues and expenses. Revenues came in one point with one billion dollars less than anticipated. The largest variance was taxes, which was one million, eight hundred, fifty-two thousand, and one hundred and ninety-five dollars less than anticipated. There are various reasons taxes come in less than anticipated, including appeals and late payments. Expenditures came in five million, two hundred, ninety-six thousand, seven hundred, thirty-one dollars less than estimated. The largest solid expenditure variance was in instruction at two point one million dollars. Fiscal year twenty-four beginning fund balance was fourteen point nine million dollars, as shown in the purple box to the right. As discussed previously, based on the budget, a surplus of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars would go back to the fund balance, shown in orange. The surplus is the difference between the budgeted revenue and expenditures. The actual surplus amount that went back to the fund balance was four point two million dollars, which resulted in a fund balance of nineteen million dollars, as shown in green, in a fund balance percentage of twenty percent. This slide shows the visual of fiscal year twenty-four budget versus fiscal year twenty-four actual. In the chart to the left, the budget is represented in yellow, and the actuals are represented in we see that salaries, benefits, and operations came in less than budgeted. In the chart to the right, we see that taxes came in less than budgeted, and other locals in QBE came in a little more than what was budgeted. QBE increases for various reasons, including employees obtaining various certifications and higher degrees, and as new employees or students join the district. Other grants came in slightly less than anticipated, and this is due to grants that were budgeted for fiscal year twenty-four, and revenue was not received. An example would be buses for transportation. We received a three-year grant for buses. Due to the wait time on buses, the buses were not paid for or received in fiscal year twenty-four, which means the district did not receive the reimbursement fund for the grant. A breakdown of the fiscal year twenty-four budgeted and actual expenditures shows that the largest dollar balances were salaries and benefits. Salary and benefits accounted for eighty-seven percent of the budget for fiscal year twenty-four. Overall, salaries came in one million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars less than budgeted. Benefits came in one point six million dollars less than budgeted, and operational expenditures came in approximately one point six million dollars less than anticipated. The four largest dollar amount surpluses were in instruction, pupil services, student transportation, and improvement in training of instructional services. The breakdown for each of these areas is listed. Of the five point three million dollar variance between budgeted and actual expenditures, approximately four million dollars with salaries and benefits. Salary and benefit savings occurred primarily from vacant positions throughout the year and docked salaries due to employees being out on vacation and play. The Board has expressed an interest in budgeting salaries differently to account for the average vacant position, and we are working with our software vendors to determine what options are made. The current fiscal year savings from vacant positions will be reviewed and reallocated to fund mid-year requests. Are there any questions?
Sorry, I just have a few, since we'll be looking more specifically at some of this during the retreat. So, just to make sure I understand this, on slide six, when we're looking at the four boxes with the main areas of surplus, we budgeted for thirty-nine million in salaries, but we actually spent thirty-eight million.
Which one?
Uh, slide six, with the four charts, expenditure budget overview summary. There are four categories, instruction, student trans-
Okay.
So, we budgeted for this amount, and we actually spent less, and part of that could be for vacancies. Now moving up to the next slide, there's budget versus actual, and then there's one more here, and I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So, in the major expenditure categories, are those all salaries and benefits?
No, the salary, benefits, and operation, that's the full budget.
Okay. And so then, what we have is the amount we budgeted, the amount we actually spent, the dollar difference, and then the percentage increase from twenty-four to twenty-five in that particular spending category. Is that correct? So that, you know, for instruction-
For this slide, so this is the budget-
Oh, sorry, yes.
-fiscal year twenty-four budget, what we actually spent, the variance, like you said, the dollar amount, and then the percentage increase or decrease when you compare the two fiscal years.
Okay. So then going up one more slide, and then my last question, on slide twenty-five, so again, we have the budgeted amount for instruction. We have the amount we actually spent, the dollar difference, and then is the percent change, the percent in funds that we spent?
The percent change is the difference between fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, so if I spent a hundred dollars in twenty-four, and now I've spent six percent more in FY twenty-five, so it's a hundred what, I'm so tired, a hundred and six dollars again. That's what the percentage means though, correct?
Correct. Like for instruction-
Yep.
-this budget, with fiscal year twenty budget, was fifty million, fifty point four million. We actually spent fifty-eight point three million, so the difference between the two is three point five four percent.
Um, Dr. Broom, I just have one question on, I guess it's your slide, I don't know if it's your slide twenty-five? Um, or your slide-
With the twenty-five budget.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, that one.
Okay.
So, for FY twenty-four budget versus FY twenty-five budget, why are we starting out FY twenty-five drawing off three million from the fund balance? Was that, that three million in the red there?
Mm-hmm. So, when you look at FY twenty-five, you see your total revenue is a hundred and three million, seven hundred, thirty-one, seven hundred and nineteen dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you go down, you see your total expenditures of one hundred and fifty million, seven hundred, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Okay.
The difference between the two is the three million.
And it also sounds like some of the take-home message from this is that we're over-budgeting on salaries, which also is-
Yes. So, because we don't know what this is throughout the year, we don't know what employees will be docked. Like for FM L A for fiscal year twenty-four, dock was four hundred thousand dollars. So that's why for fiscal year twenty-five, we are going to look at all of that prior to bringing the mid-year request. Thank you.
Oh, I see. Okay, so some of that could potentially be shaved off, potentially by a mid-year amendment.
For fiscal year twenty-five, yes.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
I have one follow-up they've done, um, Dr. Solton's question, then, on slide six. When we're looking at salaries, that's all salaries in total. Right? Uh, that's the FY twenty-
I'm sorry, this doesn't happen now. When you're looking at salaries, yes, at fiscal year twenty-four budget, the salaries for general fund of entire district.
But then, the surplus, am I reading this correctly so far, is really coming from the salaries for instruction that are being budgeted. I mean, based on this slide, the four areas, the main areas of surplus are instruction, pupil services, student transportation, and improvement, training of instructional services.
Correct. Okay. Correct. And it makes sense, instruction will be higher because we have more instructional staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions over here?
Um, I'm just, I'm sorry, one more question, and, um, I guess it's still on your slide three, are they, did I have that right?
Sorry.
Uh, it looks like the variance on support services business is, the variance is forty-two point, forty-two, forty-two percent upward. Do we know why that's so large?
No.
Go one more back. There you go.
This is-
Mm-hmm. Under school administration, looks like it's gone up by, it went from-
We did a lot of, um, reallocated funds, like for example, there were funds that were in the superintendent's budget that I moved to, like, insurance, I moved that to the business budget, so fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay.
And then that also goes to the salary increase.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Broom. The bad item, the monthly, the monthly financial report can be moved to consent.
Okay.
Consent agenda item number two was the school nutrition report. Any comments from the Board? Item can be moved to consent. Consent agenda item three is a personnel report. Any comments from the Board? Item can be moved to consent. Number four is overnight out-of-state travel. Any comments from the Board? This item can move to consent. Consent agenda item five was the 2024-2025 legislative priorities we discussed in work session last month and presented them today. Any comments from the Board? This item can be moved to consent. Item number six is the architect stations. Any questions or comments from the Board? Excellent. Item can be moved to consent. Agenda item seven is the ELA textbooks, Great Minds. Any comments from the Board? Excellent. Item can move to consent. Agenda item eight, ELA textbook, The Hoffman-Mifflin-Harcourt. Any comments from the Board?
One clarification. These are the ones that we looked at last year, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is now time to purchase, and they exceed the dollar mark.
And then finally, consent agenda item nine, ELA textbook, Wilson Reading. Any comment from the Board? Hearing none, those nine items can move to consent. The next two consent agenda items were added as a result of discussion during executive session. Dr. Whitaker, what are those items?
Chair Hurd, and the City Schools of Decatur has received the executed charter contract from the Georgia Department of Education. This item is submitted for signature by the Board Chair.
Excellent. So consent agenda item ten is the charter system contract. Any comments from the Board?
Um, questions based on the policy we were looking at earlier. That policy regarding SLTs is still a draft, correct?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, it hasn't gone to social release.
Okay, thank you.
It's the thing from work session that we, yeah, it's now open for public comment and feedback.
And for community members who are interested in finding the contract, where would they be, or finding the charter, where would they be able to-
It's on assembly, and then, um, and it just got posted to the website as well.
So, I'll have one last question. Uh, I think, um, I, I was looking at it quickly, and I noticed that, I think, the meetings are open to public inspection, since we have assembly, and we're doing such a good job of putting so much up there. Is there a reason we don't want to just, uh, what's the word? I want to say prescribed, but does the open for inspection mean that they should be published, or that they will be published?
They're required to be published.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's a open me.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments about the charter system contract? No. Move that to consent. And Dr. Whitaker, what is the second item?
Chair Hurd, and the second item from executive session is to approve the superintendent to evaluate options, and then to recommend a viable option for action to establish a security program that includes armed and post-certified security staff with the same law enforcement powers on school property as law enforcement officers of the City School of Decatur.
Thank you. Consent agenda item eleven, it is CSD Armed Security. Any comments or feedback from the Board? Okay, hearing none, move to consent. Those are our recommendations.
Uh, Chair Hurd, may I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
I recommend the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve consent agenda items one through eleven.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through eleven?
Approved.
Thank you, Dr. Solton makes the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Second motion, any discussion of any of those ten, eleven agenda items? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Moving on to the next item, which is policy. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to present four policies for second read action.
Good evening again, Board members and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. Tonight, we have four policies for second read action. Each of these policies were presented last month for first read and have been available for public comment through assembly. First, we have policy D I B, financial report. No feedback was received through public comment, and no changes have been made to the version presented last month. May I read the recommendation?
Of course.
I recommend the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve policy D I B, financial reports for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to approve policy D I B, financial reports for action?
A move.
Thank you, Johnson Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Solton, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Lynch?
Second, we have policy- Second, we have policy D J E A Purchasing Authority. No feedback was received through public comment and no changes have been made to the version presented last month. The recommendation is, I recommend the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education, approve policy D J E A Purchasing Authority for action.
Excellent, do I have a motion to approve policy D J E A Purchasing Authority for action?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Sultan makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson Davis, second motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, Ms. Lynch?
Third, we have policy D J E A C Purchasing or Credit Card Use. No feedback was received through public comment and no changes have been made to the version presented last month. The recommendation is, I recommend the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education, approve policy D J E A C Purchasing or Credit Card Use for action.
Excellent, do I have a motion to approve policy D J E A C Purchasing or Credit Card Use for action?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Sultan makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Policy D C Annual Operating Budget, this proposed policy is revision to an existing policy. No feedback was received through public comment and no changes have been made to the version presented last month. The recommendation is that I recommend the City Schools, Board of Education, approve policy D C Annual Operating Budget for action.
Excellent, do I have a motion to approve policy D C Annual Operating Budget for action?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Sultan, second motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, that concludes all of our policies, thank you, Mrs. Lynch. We will now move to the public comment portion of our meeting, assuming we have people sign up?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I will read a legal clarification and statement about public comment. The following information is included in the board policy manual, members of the public also acknowledge this information when they sign up to speak. As a reminder, to all speakers and those in the audience, the opportunity to address the board is limited to parents, students, residents, employees, businesses and organizations. Those wishing to address the board must sign in before the comment period begins and are asked to state their connection. So allow time for boards of the business public comment is limited to one hour or twenty speakers. At the board's discretion, public comment period may be extended. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes, person speaking during comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time, comments during public comment should be addressed to the board as a body, not to any individual board members. Chair's discretion, persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional, speakers are not to list complaints about a specific person, personnel or individuals connected with the district during a public session. The board strictly prohibits abusive language, threats, comments, cheers, applause or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair or legal counsel may terminate public comment that is profane, vulgar, defamatory or disruptive. If any speaker's comments verge into areas of hate speech or defamation, legal counsel or I will have to ask the speaker to end their comment. Speakers may not address a confidential student or personnel matter, they should submit those concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons representing, presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. Instead, a member of the administrative team will follow up with person speaking as a board member, Dr. Whitaker, if you could call our speakers.
Yes, the first speaker for today is Saheed Abdi Abdi.
Okay, can you circle back around?
Okay, the second speaker is Sakha, Sakhadio Chik.
My name is Sakhadio Chik.
That's good.
Okay, um, so over the past three years at Decatur High School, numerous issues related to racism and discrimination and complaints about diversity, every inclusion has surfaced. While some of these issues are rightly acknowledged and challenged by students, others are ignoring these myths. One of our educators, staff members, mentors, mentors and sponsors was subjugated to unsecured stress, criticism bias and have been spending time. This individual and others have been hesitant to speak out of the fear of losing their jobs, autism issues and abuse of power by individuals who are threatened by the idea of an adult black male or anyone from marginalized groups showing support for one another, especially when their concerns are consistent with others. We all remember when a teacher said a racial slur and the entire, it took an entire year to read. And so for you guys to, for you guys to, um, what's the word, to spend a teacher intubating, which is unfair. This is especially of our black teachers, an example of systematic issue at Decatur High School and marginalized students when he was pulled from the classroom for his own sins and his own treatment. Students were already vulnerable to the community and have been suffering. Their support systems were disrupted and the lack of action transformed in that moment only further escalated these students. The parent of a moving educator who connected with marginalized students exhibits an idea of already harming environments for students that have been facing it. The fair use, Decatur says it serves all students, but it truly serves all. The district has openly admitted its failures to act on unfair classroom in the past, yet continues to perpetrate these things by removing black educators from the classroom and, and, and justly disciplining them. We are asking the board to recognize these actions are harmful in not only black educators, but every student that depend on their mentorship and guidance and safe learning environment. District, the district owes an educational debt to these students, which is particularly those from underrepresented backgrounds. One goal, the one goal program provided invaluable guidance on college applications, scholarships and career programs for students from all backgrounds. When no teacher in the classroom, many students were, have been left without support and, that they needed in the narrative. The staff was not only deprived students of vital academic support, but also left many without mentors that they needed. Our seniors that are in this class also lost their application time and lost the guys that they needed because of this decision to go for anyone. Um, I'm sure that some of you guys have parents and children and dear cases, and I know that y'all would hate to find that your child isn't learning because of this suspension. But we need to stop giving wrong people authority. Over time, individuals who misuse their power are causing lasting harm to both students and educators. They continue to abuse authorities in the school system, perpetrating cycles of injustice and denies marginalized groups support that they deserve. We cannot continue allowing this system to harm the very, the very people it meant to serve. It's time for accountability, the administration must take responsibility for their decisions and stop allowing individuals to wield power in ways that they harm community, especially for those that need the support. They characterize itself on being a supportive, inclusive and equitable community and it demonstrates those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Adam Harlitt.
Hey, everyone, um, Adam Harlitt, I am a parent of two students at Decatur High School, um, and I'm also here as a Jewish resident of Decatur. Um, I'm here to talk about what to me seem to be a really disturbing double standard that I've heard about that was carried out in the high school on October seventh of this year, when there were students who were wearing a Palestinian kaffiyah in solidarity with the Palestinian people who are undergoing genocide in Gaza, who were pulled out of class, questioned by assistant principals in the school, asked to write down a version of why they were doing it, which I would say, as a parent, if it was one of my kids, would have sounded like, almost like an affidavit of sorts, um, again, without any like parental oversight or anything like that, whereas at the same time, there were other students at the school who were there showing, I would say solidarity with Israel in this situation, wearing pro-Israeli military paraphernalia and T-shirts who were not treated in the same way. And I think ultimately, this double standard comes from a place of anti-Palestinian racism and Islamophobia, honestly, and that most of the students, least ones I heard about, were also members of the Muslim Student Association. And so there's a few points I'd want to make about this, which I think is some important context. So, one of the most important things to understand, and I think we all understand this, is that this was done on October seventh to mark a year of genocide that's been taking place in Gaza. Uh, at least forty two thousand people have been killed there, although public health officials believe that that number exceeds two hundred thousand people. Uh, the International Court of Justice has said this is a plausible genocide. And so this is what the students were, um, seeking to acknowledge. And they were doing it by wearing a Palestinian kaffiyah, and I'm not sure exactly what the understanding is on the board, but I've seen in media, uh, stories, a real misrepresentation of what that symbol means, which it's really just a cultural symbol of the Palestinian people, it doesn't have any, uh, implicit political, uh, message or leaning other than to say, we are standing with people who are undergoing this genocide. And the other thing that's important to understand, and again, and I think this is a message that you've heard, uh, in front of the board from other members of the community, maybe other Jewish members of the community, that October seventh maybe has a special meaning for Jewish people. Of course, anyone should feel free and has a right to remember that day in the month, but that day doesn't have only a meaning for, for Jewish people. It has a meaning for anyone who cares about human rights, the dignity of the Palestinian people, especially at a moment when they're undergoing a genocide. And I think people deserve the right to remember that day in the way that they want, but there needs to be one standard by which people are able to remember it, and people should not be treated differently just because of remembering Palestinians.
From my ear, uh, we're not finished with applause. Do that or subject to being removed from the presidency.
The next speaker is Bushra Mohammed.
My name is Bushra Mohammed, I'm a sophomore at Decatur High School. I'm also president of folk culture club, vice president of Muslim Student Association, and secretary of the community function. What I want to share here today is how I feel as a Muslim student here at Decatur. Since October seventh, there's been multiple attacks on people who may as well be pro-Palestinian. But seven days after October seventh, a sixty-year-old Palestinian boy was stabbed twenty-six times at his family, at his home, by his family's landlord. His mother also suffered, suffered more than a dozen stab, stab wounds. Luckily she survived, but due to her injuries, she was unable to attend her son. On January twenty eighth, three twenty-year-old Palestinian students were shot at in Brooklyn while they were walking home, near the home of one of their grandmother's houses. They were wearing the kaffiyah. Luckily, they all survived, but due to this, one of these students was left paralyzed from the chest down. On October eighth, twenty twenty-four, a seven-year-old girl's throat was cut, had a bar at In-N-Out. Even that has made me feel unsafe in Decatur, and this is not the only time. I've, I have felt unsafe well before October seventh, and even more now when I cross the street to and from school wearing the hijab or kaffiyah. I felt unsafe when a Jewish student wore an I D F shirt hoodie to school, a hoodie that shows support to a military group that's killed millions of Palestinians. Jewish students are not the only ones that feel unsafe. I feel, it feels like my voice is being unheard and this, this needs to change. And you see equality in this school, and our voices need to be heard. Decatur identifies on being a very, very, is there really?
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carrie Lynn.
Greetings, Superintendent and Board members, my name is Carrie Lynn. I'm a resident and homeowner in Decatur, I'm also an educator and active communal member. I'm here today to talk to you about equity. At a time when equity efforts are increasingly under attack, when teachers in Georgia and other states are told they can't use the term diversity, it becomes increasingly important to ensure that the equity policies and practices we have in place in our schools are sturdy, are working and are measurable. I'm concerned because I'm seeing evidence that this is not the case in City Schools of Decatur. When I read repeatedly in the news that black teachers are being disciplined for showing support for Palestinian and Muslim students, I know the school system has equity problems. When I see that the number of employees tasked with equity work has decreased in recent years despite a clear need for that work, I know the school system has equity issues. When Muslim students tell me they are being targeted for their belief that they are unsafe and that they have felt consistently unsupported in our schools, I know we have equity problems. When I come to school board meetings and hear that the school system is failing its most marginalized students, it's clear that equity has not been a priority here. When a staff member is suspended, investigated and disciplined for sharing some of the same resources linked to on the equity section of the C S D website, it is evident that the website lingo isn't being backed up by actual practices and that the school system has a lot of work to do in order to walk its path. As the leaders of this school system, your task of ensuring we have equitable practices and policies and that teachers and students are not being discriminated against. Further, you make decisions to build our reputation as a community and create our legacy as a place where education happens. Please stop punishing teachers for supporting and advocating for their students and more broadly for promoting awareness of marginalized cultures and groups. They're doing their job, that's tasked by the school's equity plan. Please start enacting policies that will address the equity gaps in the quality of our education for our students of more marginalized backgrounds. We need to see you upholding your promise to address the education debt, not increasing what is owed.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Reverend Sarah Webb Phillips.
My name is Sarah Webb Phillips, a retired United Methodist clergy, Decatur resident and homeowner and grateful parent of a child with a D H S education that led to an environmental engineering career. Having spoken at last year's board meeting regarding a teacher providing Middle Eastern resources, I assume this year's students are learning in appropriate classes, the history of Israel-Palestine and how difficult and complicated this conflict is and that there is support for educators teaching history and cultures and providing for services of support for students. These inhuman beings remain horrified over five million Holocaust victims of the last century and last year's Jewish twelve hundred victims, two hundred forty hostages and hundreds of injuries from the Hamas attacks. These inhuman beings are also horrified over the direct killings of over forty-three plus thousand deaths and a hundred and nine plus thousand injuries of Palestinian civilians, many of whom are, were not terrorists nor harbors them nor aligned with the radical wing of the Hamas party. I returned in early September from the West Bank, where our group cried with families who lost loved ones at Kebit Narim, a lovely modern settlement near the Nova Festival site. We also went to Bethlehem, a walled-in refugee camp with limited access to water, electricity and little sanitation management, and cried with mothers of disabled children with little medical access. Across the West Bank, we met Palestinians who had lost or still had family members trapped in Gaza. We met a few Jewish settlers who were protecting their Palestinian neighbors. Our group was grieved at such a beautiful land and people not able to choose peace over death and destruction of the others. Just as I expect teachers and school officials are being sympathetic to Jewish students this past year, I presume the same sympathy is extended to Palestinian, Arab and Muslim students. The kaffiyah has long been a symbol since Sumerian times of Arab personhood, not of a particular religion or country. Just as prayer shawl has been for Jewish faith identity, both should be able to be worn proudly without ridicule. I ask the Decatur School Board to make sure that they are teaching context and history where students of various backgrounds can learn culture and humanity of others. Such knowledge and understanding builds bridges. The Atlanta-area multi-faith coalition for Palestine are Jews, Muslims, Christians and others working to educate our area and its diverse people, to pray for and resource toward an end of the current conflict. to pray for and resource toward an end of the current conflict. Decatur School Board sees this moment to teach and train students to understand and solve conflict toward the goal of a world not divided but diversity, our various cultures contribute. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Yunira Sharif.
Hello, my name is Yunira, and I'm a former DHL student. Um, five hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven minutes, nine thousand three hundred sixty-two hours, fifty-seven weeks, thirteen months, four hundred and two days, exact amount of time that's passed since Gaza has been under attack. Inflicted with the worst of violence, subjected to the worst living conditions. The amount of time the world has witnessed publicly televised, mind you, the endless crimes against humanity, multiple infringements of international law, is outrageous. Palestinians have spent a year in a hellish environment, watching their loved ones slaughtered mercilessly in the most awful ways. We've all seen it, the rubble of the buildings, and the mothers and the children, the men. Gaza's whole population crying out anguish as the world turns a blind eye to their suffering, leaving them alone and abandoned. We as students may not be able to do much for the atrocities being committed halfway across the world, but what we can do is show dissent and stand in solidarity with those who are victims of oppression. Palestinians have long reiterated that solidarity means the world to them, validation of their pain and suffering, that they are being heard and seen. Those marginalized students have had to watch and stand idly while we have, while we see people like us suffer, knowing we have no support system and much ignorance and hostility to combat. Time and time again, we have been cast aside as if our feelings don't mean anything, and those around us have been given more voice than we ever had. CFC has given voice and validation to only those whose voices are loud, not correct, just loud. We have tried speaking out only to be shut down, and because of that, and the unjust, uh...
The next speaker is Mowali Davis.
Good evening. Good evening. This is the young man who was first called, and I just wanted to, uh, he wasn't present. Aye, and we're here. I'm here.
We're going to call him again, so you'll get your three-month notice. Sorry.
Um, I'm here on behalf of BK Hill Black Alliance for Human Rights. Two thousand seventeen, we began work around equity, primarily focused on, um, black children who, um, the district was very clear, had disproportionately been marginalized, both through, by an achievement gap as well as, uh, discipline. And so we began that work, which is now, been seven years, and we still, uh, have issues. Uh, we're here today because, um, we want to support our students who have taken a principal stance as it relates to the genocide in Palestine. We believe that their targeting is both inappropriate and illegal, that they should not be, um, pulled into any classrooms and interrogated by any member of the staff, of any teacher, um, without their parent's involvement, without lawyer representation. Um, and that needs to be investigated. We'd like to know that there is some report back on that. I also want to lift up a contradiction in that, um, as the young lady was just mentioning, um, the name of the, one of the affected administrators that was not challenged when he was called out by others. Um, in the last board meeting, and that's broadcast all over, his name, nobody stopped that. But now, you, people are being stopped. So I just want to lift up the contradiction between what was done to him by those who opposed him and attacked him, and then those who come and support, now they're being told not to mention his name. So I think that's important, and again, it just demonstrates that this is out of bounds. We want to create a safe community for our students, and they don't feel safe. And that's a reality that falls, that you all see. We got to deal with that in a very real, real way. It reminds me also of Rosalind Pope, who is an ancestor now, who was a student at Spelman, who helped pin the appeal for human rights. And when she did that, the attack that came was, this couldn't have been done by students. This could not have been generated by students. And so there was an attack, and I'd like for you all to look at how that happened to what became a, a living document that we lifted her up, Rosalind Pope, she's been here before she passed away, and how these attacks against students and blaming, um, administrators when students have their own voices is not the appropriate thing. So again, we lift that up, and we stand in solidarity with these students, especially this young man who they have questioned in an inappropriate way. Thank you.
I missed one in the beginning, so we were going to circle back. Said.
Honorable members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here because I care deeply about this community and the values we stand for. Recently, I experienced something that left me feeling targeted and honestly anxious about my place here. I was pulled out of class, asked to sign the papers, and questioned about wearing my kaffiyah. I felt singled out as if my choice to wear something that represented my culture and my support for Palestine somehow made, made me suspicious or threatening. For me, the kaffiyah is not just a piece of clothing. It's a symbol of self-determination, resilience, and pride in my heritage. It's a part, it's a part of my identity and expression of solidarity, but being questioned for wearing it made me feel like I was being threatened differently. And if my culture was something that needed to be explained or justified, that experience left me feeling vulnerable and uncertain, and it made me wonder if I really accepted for who I am here. I know I'm not alone in feeling this way, when students are singled out or, or threatened differently because of what they say, believe, how they dress, or what they stand for. It sends a message to all of us. It tells us that some parts of our identity might not be welcome here. It creates a culture of fear, silence, where students feel that they have to hide parts of themselves to fit in or avoid being targeted. Our school is supposed to be a place where all students feel safe, respected, and able to express themselves freely. We need to ensure that every student feels like they truly belong regardless of their background, belief, or culture. I'm asking the board to consider how situations like these affect students and, uh, and to work towards creating an environment where we do not feel afraid to be ourselves. Let's make sure that all, really does need all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Said. All right. I would like to, we would like to thank all of the speakers for taking time to be here tonight. In particular, I'd like to thank the students who took the time to speak up and represent yourself. As board members, it is incredibly important for us to hear the concerns of our community. We will take your comments into consideration. A member of the administrative staff will be following up. Next Tuesday, November nineteenth, from ten to two, is the board's second retreat of the year. It is at the Performing Arts Center at Decatur High School campus. Agendas discussed are in preparation for next school year's budget, such as tuition, school allotment guideline, and teacher and staff compensation. And then our final board meeting of twenty twenty-four is, wow, that's, uh, is Tuesday, December tenth, uh, here at the Wilson Center. Any questions about future dates?
I'm here at six thirty, but was not able to sign because I went to the other door.
Hmm.
Can I speak for just a moment?
I'm okay with three minutes. No. If you can send an email to the board, someone will reach out to you and make time for you in December. I apologize. All right, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at six fifty-five P.M.